Board of Selectmen's Fiscal Year 20 Budget Work Session. In attendance tonight on Wednesday, April 10th is Select Board Members Deedee, Moguln, and Fox, Chief Administrative Officer Steinhardt, Town Accountant Staffing Members Melinda Wingate, Laura Fletcher, and Carol Delagistina. Here you go, Mr. Chairman.
So why don't you educate us on your paperwork in front of us? Where do we start with this? Are we gonna start with where we're at first? Oh yeah, sure, give us the good news.
Why don't you pass that out? You know, because we might as well look at that and shut.
Well, we only brought one.
So bad they couldn't afford to print another sheet.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, I just...
Just let them know how much, how much we're...
Three million five hundred.
We have to cut.
Three million five hundred.
In order to have a budget.
Just get to the levy limit, not underneath it.
Yeah.
To get to the levy limit is 3.5.
Right, and that's with a free cash offset.
And that include, so what's in there, everything?
It's everything. It's all your, it's all the huge capital, some items, you know, you're gonna make adjustments. I mean, almost a million of it's just the late treatments.
The alum treatment.
The alum.
It's eight hundred and fifty thousand.
So that's why you're breaking...
Those closes at 10, right?
Yeah.
It's broken down into the three sheets, so we go by the three sheets.
Yes, okay.
And then you've got this line, so you can play with this number as we mess with it, right? Yes.
So you would make the decisions based on the three sheets for capital, under and over 25, new positions and new operations?
Yes.
And then you would go through the line item budget, and then when you're done making those adjustments, then you'd be substantially on your way to where the Finance Committee already started.
So the blue one is gonna be first, right? Okay. And whatever's on here is a new expense, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So that's all, so if it's on the right expense, it's new, period. And then to the right is what the Finance Committee thought we should do.
Yeah.
Right, or at least their opinion.
Their opinion, yes.
Oh, is this based on the other night?
Yes.
Right. Okay. So the Part-Time Staff Non-Unit Quarterly Billing Program. What were our thoughts on that?
Can we have that hold up on that determination?
Yep.
Put an H by it?
Now we crossed it out.
On hold.
It's crossed out. Okay, salary increase for the Coordinator, consider it crossed out.
No?
Nope, town hall, there's nothing to cross out there. Okay, police, that's the backfill, yeah, we know what that was about.
That's the process of sending, in fact, you already did a Finance Committee Reserve request to stop that person on their way to the academy in Mendocino.
That shifts, yeah, don't sell fast, they're close.
Right.
Yeah. I'm sorry, so part-time records clerk?
I would say no.
Okay.
I mean, before we go any further, you know, just for discussion's sake, we've already made a commitment to ALS, correct?
We have.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's not that I don't think some of these positions are necessary, I just think we already made a commitment to ALS.
I believe that was articulated to the Town Meeting floor.
Okay.
Well, it's interesting, right? So that I get, so increase in reserve training hours, I don't know if we have an option on that.
Well, do we have to fully fund it for those amounts? I can understand the crossing guard would be a yes.
Yeah, 'cause right, that's, absolutely.
Right, that, that just means it's being funded out of another line item.
And then Kevin said the increase in community policing was just to cover in case somebody didn't wanna take comp time.
The comp time.
Right?
Right.
But they always have taken comp time, so...
Right.
Well, or you should do it on overtime basis, 'cause you're really, you don't have a comp time agreement with the police union, so it really becomes one-off agreements.
Well, the only thing that bothers me there is, I'm okay with the 8,000, if it's not used and it goes back in the general fund, I get it, it's a line item and it goes away, but I don't wanna double dip, I don't wanna lose the 8,000 and the comp time is still high.
That's why I was thinking...
That aggravates it.
I'd rather liquidate the comp time.
He's looking, but he's looking for...
I'd rather not have that and liquidate it.
He's looking for $25,000, right? No, 20,000, 500 approximately.
Well, the reserved...
In those two, two things.
Right.
So if we gave him 15,000 and you, there you go, you got 15,000, do what you gotta do.
I wouldn't do that, I would, if anything...
But he's asked for that latitude.
Do, I get that, but I would do the reserve training, right, and then give him three grand towards the community policing, because I...
But he's the chief, you know what I'm saying?
I get that, I get that.
I'm saying, if, in the past, we've given the department heads discretion, say, here's 15,000, you decide where you need to spend that, and I think between donations coming in for some of the community policing and people...
No, I'm fine with that, just a matter of where you're doing it, so you're gonna say the 12 and the 8?
Give him 15,000.
Combine them, it's 15.
Right.
And he can tell us how he wants them split up in those two accounts.
There you go.
Right, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. So you'll be able to relay that to the chief that, you understand what we're saying?
Yeah.
So the 12 and the 8, hey, it's great, guys, we're gonna give you 15 towards it, figure out where you want it, and then he'll give you where he wants each line item. In our world, it's 15.
Yeah.
So, come on, how you just divide it amongst the two and then he can adjust it as needed before we go to Town Meeting. Okay.
Oh, they would have this done before you have your meeting with the Finance Committee.
Right. Yeah.
Yes, understood.
And I'm gonna say it, full-time communications supervisor, I think it's a great idea, the Fire Department wants it, Police Department wants it, but we've made a commitment to ALS. We're gonna have a new police officer, we're gonna have new ALS, so I would say no to that this year.
Okay, Douglas?
I'm fine with that.
You're fine with that, okay.
We have to really keep it on the radar for next year, but...
Right, right.
And I'm gonna say yes for the next two.
Right.
Didn't, didn't the dispatcher training relate to the third sup, the supervisor you just said no to?
Um...
I thought it did. I thought part of that was part of that.
Then we can say no to that.
Why don't we just ask the chief?
No, dispatcher training is still ongoing as part of ALS and EMS training for dispatch, so that's an, if I recall, and go back to his budget and go look at the narrative, it was in there.
So we got yes for that, right?
The other thing, just one last thing on the full-time communication, if we're all in agreement that we need it, at least maybe we put a star on it to see how the rest of this process goes, though we have two million to wade through here.
Okay.
Maybe that's something that can start the search for that process later in fiscal 2020 to put that in place, and if we need to put some money to it in order to fund it in the latter half of this budget cycle into 21. I don't know what that's gonna, anyway, it's, it goes hand in hand with, with the ALS piece too, the EMD part is, dispatch is a huge piece, and knowing, especially knowing what you're doing with dispatching ALS and so on and so forth, so just keep it on the radar for how the rest of this stuff comes out.
Okay. Yeah, and the dispatch training, it was $1,000 in '19, and he's looking for a $500 increase. Says additional funding and fees registrations for the new communications supervisor. So that says...
So that can come out then, so I'm wrong.
That says going from about, that, that went up to 1,500, so dispatcher training, so is that in another, actually, that's under the chief's EMS budget, so that's not under the police, the dispatch budget that Kevin... All right, so we'll leave that as a yes for the police, the fire chief?
Okay.
Yeah, it's under EMS, yeah.
All right, and then Kevin also had wanted to continue on the, the 41 days of coverage, and that's the net increase for animal control with Lizanne.
Yep, yes.
Working in there. Labor minimum wage, now Laura, this, is this because we have certain part-time or seasonal people that were below $12?
There was, the laborers for the DPW.
Yeah, well, by the way, this also relates to Park and Rec's lifeguards too.
Right.
You know, or the gate people, 'cause they're getting paid as much as the lifeguards.
But we've been just kinda level funding them every year, the same amount, so we just put it in as a placeholder to say, do we wanna bump it up?
Add more dollars to the bottom line pool.
Yeah.
Right, and the same, the same thing could be said for the Park and Rec's budget for running the Town Beach.
Yeah, and I almost think I...
Because you really, you used to have gate, you had concession people, gate people at 11, when the minimum wage was there, and you had a lifeguard at 12, and then all of a sudden, your gate person and all these other people are making as much as a lifeguard, and I think we all know between certifications and the training and the importance of that, plus the other supervisors in that department, that we're gonna have to look at the bottom line for the lifeguards too, for, just for the, what do you call them, beach operations and beach salaries. And here's the other thing, what is the minimum wage going up to next year?
75 cents.
Okay, so, so that's in the middle of this fiscal year, so we're gonna have to adjust the DPW line item and the Town Beach salaries.
So DPW's get two guys for the summer for summer help, right?
Yeah.
So that's $80 a week, 40 hours a week, a buck more an hour, so just figure $100 more a week will cover, so how many weeks do we have those two DPW guys?
About 10 weeks at least, right? At least 10 weeks.
Usually, they're supposed to...
Six months, but 10 weeks, so...
So probably figure 1,300 in that line item will cover the DPW's increase of the dollar, plus the 75 cents halfway through.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, no, they won't be around for the 75.
Okay.
They'll just be...
Well, they will be in the following June.
Right, before the budget's done.
Before the budget, okay.
Right?
If he hires them in mid...
Right, remember, I'm thinking this through till June 30.
That's just rounding up the 1,500.
1,500, I promise you it'll be gone long before the June issue.
So we're gonna put 1,500 in a, a star next to it or a question mark?
By December.
Yeah.
No, that's the, and I get it, 'cause it'll be on, it'll be, won't be enough in there once they start again.
Right.
'Cause it's run up a couple bucks.
And so, and what's your pleasure with the, the beach salaries for, for lifeguards and those stuff?
Have we gotten to that yet? Is it on here or no? It's gonna be different?
It's not.
No, it's not on here, but this is something I'm bringing up, that I'm just thinking about out loud by extension with this.
Well, so, so you're, you're talking, what, three kids over there, four kids?
Where?
Beach.
The Town Beach.
Right, and they're what, they're not 40 hours a week though?
No, and they're only six or seven weeks.
But the beach is open how many hours?
Maybe seven weeks.
Well, the beach is open, what, July 1st?
Right, so say eight weeks.
So for a month, right?
Well, no, it goes till the end, so six or seven weeks is what I'm thinking.
Okay.
And I'll go back and look, because I may have put in for the beach.
Okay, please do.
I, I may have, in my thinking, already anticipated it, just part of me is...
Why don't we just say the equivalent, but you have to bump, bump the lifeguards in a equivalent amount?
Right, so when you do look at that, figure out how many kids, you know?
Laura, just make a note for, for looking at the lifeguards, if you've already factored it in, fine, if you haven't, let's make sure that...
George, we get it factored.
What about the cemetery?
Cemetery, well, they have, I thought they were getting more than minimum wage.
Right, and so isn't...
And actually, the Park and Rec rail trails are...
And they increased their, 'cause I was looking at it, and they increased their line.
In their budget, yeah?
In their budget.
Cemetery or for Park and Rec?
Cemetery, so I was, part of my question was, was that anticipation of new rates?
Probably.
But there was a slight increase.
Well, everybody has to make at least $12.
Yeah.
Right, so we don't have any choice on that.
The rail trail was roughly...
Well, technically, they don't have to leave it, but...
21 to 23.
Right.
So we do, technically.
Correct, right, but we do it, we do it.
What did you say went up to now?
It was 21, 4, and it went to 23, 4.
So somebody must have...
Yeah, so they figured it out.
Somebody's thinking.
Okay. All right, and this is important, these are the little things during the course of the year that end up having some sort of a, an issue that comes through the accounting office's door.
Right.
When payrolls are being done.
Absolutely.
Stormwater management coordinator?
Looks like the Finance Committee took a position, no.
What was their position related to the, the actual stormwater operational line item of 100? Does this, was there context with this with that, or are they just capping that?
Stormwater, it was all no's. DPW engineering, stormwater mapping, hosting, office supplies, traffic studies, software data plans, no.
The 100,000 was a yes.
Oh, the 100,000.
And they kept kind of, Mel, if I remember correctly, they kinda kept referring back to the 100,000.
So it all, it all has to come from that?
That would come from that one, yeah.
Right, right, it's a start.
But does that present the problem for the accounting department in terms of that person having to be a vendor?
Lot of payroll in there.
Or payroll, or do you end up saying, well, if, if Randy's gonna need this other person, I gotta lower that 100, and I have to manage it within that cap?
Right, whenever you guys decide, you know, we're gonna have to, again, put the, I think, put those salaries in the right line.
Right, so we may end up amending the other one to fit it into this one.
Right, it'll be 80,000, and then this will be the one.
Okay, so that'll be a, that'll be a discussion with the FinCon to reconcile that.
Yeah.
Okay. So do we wanna say the word no or hold on that?
On the storm water?
Yeah.
I think you have to just look at the 100,000.
Right, but if we say the word, but if in the end the town accountant is gonna say to you, you have to move money out of the 100 to put it...
Two stars for that one, one star for the dispatch, two stars for the storm water. My clerk will make notes down below what the stars are going for.
He's gonna create the legend?
Yeah. He is a legend.
He own mine.
As long as, as long as you're there, buddy. Increase hours for director.
No.
Increase hours for part-time secretary.
No.
I think you're gonna have to do something for that part-time secretary eventually.
Well, we added hours last year.
We did, but we also went back and took away the...
We reduced other line items.
Yeah, but the whole building inspector issue with the existing secretary.
Right, that was part of your discussion with, Joe's discussion with Jerry was, you know, he had to move the activities away from supporting them, from the reclassification of that job description.
Right. So I'm just saying, you're gonna, eventually, you're gonna have to do something there.
A star?
I, I wouldn't even do that, you know what I would do? I would put $200 there.
Okay.
How's that?
200.
200. It's something in the...
250.
Oh, Fox is being generous, please note that. Increase dining room hours for adult daycare.
I believe based upon our meeting with the chairperson of that committee yesterday that we were going to reprogram these funds from there, 'cause this is really money that comes through as a grant anyway, to the dining center.
Gotcha.
Their formula grant, but we were looking at moving these dollars over to the part-time salaries line item for the activities of six more hours a week for afternoon programs, is that correct, Mr. Fox?
Correct, right.
Is that something new?
Yeah.
If you're moving it to another, you're moving it to another line item in the COA budget.
Okay.
So does it need to be here as an increase then, or?
It is. This one didn't need to be here, 'cause she's getting this as a grant anyway.
Okay, there's a second. There's a part B too.
What?
Well, 'cause I thought we just had this more for an informational, that, you know...
Because the Finance Committee wanted to make sure that it was triggering grant funds and all that, right?
But it's coming out of the grant, it's not coming out of the town budget.
Right, but now we have, subsequent to this being put together based on a meeting yesterday morning, in Mr. Fox's presentation of that report out to the full board last night, it ends up being the number will in fact have to be built into the part-time for council on aging.
Right, so...
The 4,000?
Yeah.
Yes, so it's an item number, that's fine.
Right, because we don't ever...
We may be assigning floaters.
And the other thing is, in this whole budget...
'Cause it's six hours a week.
We don't see the revenue side, right?
Right.
So we don't, yeah, we're programming the money from the grant to cover this, but this budget doesn't cover, all we do is we look at, we don't have the revenue side of where all the monies come from, so it has to be in here, or else you won't have it.
Right, well, the, the money's already in hand, but it's going somewhere else.
I understand.
That other money, the grant money was going somewhere else.
Right, right, right.
You're taking a sub, you're taking essentially almost the same dollars, and you're putting into the budget that you'll need to have the money offset in the, the budget revenue account.
So we're gonna, so money will be taken, we'll have to add...
Nothing to do with the grant.
Right, just, it's an increase of 4,000.
It's an increase of 4,000.
Yeah, let's, we're overthinking that.
Okay.
All right.
No, you guys aren't, just the more we talk about it, the more, the more we get you screwed up.
Well, this happened after you had developed this.
Yeah, it's all good, just gotta keep those old folks pretty happy down there.
Excuse me?
Gotta keep those old folks pretty happy down there. Are you in the cribbage club, ma'am? Are you in the reading club? Which club are you in?
She likes her cross-stitching.
Okay, if you're a cross-stitching man after hours, that's what this is for.
Combination, everything.
Because we just, we don't have pull cords, ma'am, that you can pull for the alarm.
I don't want to upset the old people.
You know, we don't wanna upset the old people. I had them all day at my place today. So I got my, I don't know.
Okay, next one.
Yes.
Thank you.
Arizona half the time anyways, yeah.
I, I would say no to both, and I, I appreciate everything the library does, but, you know, we've, again, made a commitment to ALS.
All right. Program coordinator pay increase for Park and Rec?
No.
Channel 15 additional hours to tape meetings and town crier sign?
No.
Now, if you were to do that, that would come out of the, you have the Channel 15 fund.
Yes, I know. Understood. All right, so now we go to the pink copy, is that right?
The pink one?
The operations.
Boy, someone's already crossing stuff up for us.
Okay.
Multiple listing service for 400.
Yeah, I think that one turned out, that was Sue and Laura were able to resolve that one.
Wonderful. Thank you, Laura, for resolving it. We do appreciate that. Onboard, or onboarding software from treasurer. Must be something she needs or something that she maintains.
Something she'd like.
Something she'd like.
I can't remember it in the presentation.
That is, it's, it's software.
Okay.
And it's so that you can keep track of the board members and the committee members.
It's the board's committee.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that little speech, yeah, yeah.
It turned out to be a nightmare.
Yes, I will say yes, because it is, we've...
'Cause some might be having time served, some might be on parole, some might be on probation, so this way we're all brackets together, isn't we?
Coming up to be elected or...
On X, yes.
Whichever way it is.
Right, I'll give her more money.
Of course you will.
And that's the annual.
That's okay, because it's, it's been a freaking nightmare.
We need to know who's that one, especially with more people probably being elected to positions, we're gonna really have to keep track of that now.
Mel, do you wanna watch?
The way that's going.
Yeah, with all these new elected...
With all these new elected spots, I heard they're gonna elect the crossing guards next, that's what I heard, I don't know, that's the talk at the coffee shop, I don't get there much.
What about the dog catcher? Rush, were you elected?
Yeah, were you elected for a dog catcher? You probably were, weren't you?
Let's not even go there, okay?
Were you the highest vote getter? Was that in dog years if you have to serve, or regular years?
He would know.
Was it an elective position, you said?
No, appointed.
What is it, someone couldn't get elected dog catcher?
Right, that was appointed, everything was appointed.
Was the fence viewer elected?
No, appointed.
Field driver?
Appointed, all that field driver, fence viewer, dog officer.
Not anymore.
You know, old Mr. Morehouse, when he was the dog catcher, he used to just bury them all out behind the house, that he lived in.
I think that was common.
Well, he's also a constant...
So did he bury any bodies out there?
Right.
That's what we want to know.
Are you saying our cemetery could be bigger?
All right.
Well, we're gonna have to let those two.
Conservation cellphone and travel expenses?
You know, you trained him so well the other day, he's, but he...
Yeah, but we had a weekend in between, we gotta start over with the training.
You know...
He did, he actually did very good.
Here, I'll give, here.
He did a really nice job.
I'm giving, oh, he's already got them, okay.
He even had family members show up and he wouldn't sit down and eat with them because, you know, he had to do his duty.
But he did, he served from the right and took the plates from the left, I was, I was very impressed.
Wow, I was so good at his whole computer business.
He'll be employee of the month if he keeps it up.
In case you ever happen to lose your job.
Oh, I have his application.
If this keeps up.
Conservation cellphone expenses, no.
Now, how much do we fund that for this year, Laura?
1,300.
Oh, we already did 1,300 for this? I thought we only did 1,000 for this year.
Yeah.
You did approve 1,000 for this year, and I think it came out of their revolting.
It was.
Look.
So is this.
Just because it's there, doesn't mean, you know, I get it.
We had people at a town meeting say that they had a priority. And we got, already had our priorities of ALS, so we have to make the tough decisions, and everybody's gonna have to share in the burden.
I'll get that flag, I'll start marching with it. Agreed, Mr. Fox. Okay, next up on the block. One-year support contract, computer stuff.
Uh, it's up to Doug.
Those are big numbers, too.
Oh, oh, it's not. It's up to you.
Oh.
Yes.
Does that look like Doug or?
I, I, I think both of them are yes.
Well, some of these issues also relate to, uh, we have, um, we have requirements of a local share of a grant.
Will that take care of Laura, our Windows issue, like, you know, I have Windows one, you use Windows ten, and apparently you can't read my Windows. I mean, I heard, I couldn't believe that when I started hearing that. You guys look at a budget and then it goes back to another department head, but if his computer isn't up to date.
Ours is older, yeah, ours is older.
Whichever way, whichever way it is, yeah.
Isn't that seven, Laura?
Whatever it is, whatever that magic number is, just wreaks havoc on you guys.
Look, we have all sorts of issues. They're not gonna be supported anymore.
Well, you had to end up going over there to help out with that department.
Right, they're not gonna be supported.
Well, this is one, this is great news. Yeah, absolutely. Right, if it streamlines all of that, that'd be wonderful.
Doug would be proud of me, I fixed my computer this morning, it's only ten years old.
Would you return on?
I did, no, it wasn't working, so I slapped it three or four times.
Wow.
Unplugged it and plugged it back in, and it finally came back on, so.
Oh.
It's been all this, this learning curve with Doug that's helped me.
Laura, the other thing that came up yesterday in the meeting that you, the police, fire, and myself had with our, our vendor, who's a state-approved vendor, was the issue relating to the archiving. Is that in this, or is that in the, does that have to be inserted in here as an additional item because of our?
I have it under the capital because it, um.
Okay, so it's somewhere else.
Yep, it's somewhere else.
I just wanted to make sure we're, we're accommodating for it, because it, it does speak to the issue of what we need to do to be in compliance, um, as records access officers and public records requests. Okay, alright, so you're comfortable with this, Laura, that what needs to be under this section is good?
Under this section, yes.
Okay.
Weapons maintenance.
Yes. Reconditioning shotguns, yes. It's better than buying them.
Oh, it is, it is. Phone, increased public safety telephone.
I think this is gonna be some of the costs that they're, that they're gonna be incurring as they put in. Because remember, the new phone system is a voice-over internet protocol, and they have all these other monthly charges from a state vendor called TPIX. Right, isn't that, like, we have here?
If they're using the same one, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they're using the same vendor.
Okay.
So I take it that was a yes?
Yeah. So the building inspector's annual cell phone, I think that came out of a different line item?
Yes.
Is that's what happened there?
So is there, there's a corresponding reduction under some, under their supplies by that amount?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I think he ended up.
Kinda begged the question, right?
Yeah, not really, not really.
Well, can you star that when we get to that? Cause Mr. Moguline's gonna make a suggestion.
Lake management, cell link for more security cameras.
I think this was supposed to save us money, wasn't it?
I really don't.
The thought.
No.
That was the thought.
Is this something could come out of their revolving?
That's my question.
They do have, they, they, they average eight to ten thousand pounds.
Then let's say no, and take.
Why don't you just put the word revolving next to it?
Put it on our next to it.
Yep. And that's again.
Not in red though, right? Doug, no red.
But we need to be clear, is this for boat ramps, or is this cameras for the weir gate?
I think it was for the weir gate.
So, well, then that's not, then that wouldn't be eligible under the.
Alright, put it, yes. Moving on.
The cameras to watch the weir gate?
Well.
Cause they had it vandalized last year.
That, that's a pretty elaborate system, and we don't want that.
They need to make sure that it's working properly, so the water's flowing out of the lake.
Well, that's my drink, kids drink the water, shouldn't it be in the lake?
No, that water is the surface water going south, the drinking water is flowing to the, under the water.
That's what it is, it's underneath the muck that we gotta fix. But they don't mix, right, right, settlement, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. It's all good.
Conference of travel for DPW solid waste. They said no, and that's probably a good thing to say, no.
No conference of travel for them guys?
No.
The same guy we tell you has to get more education, college courses, we're telling them, no.
What?
The same people were saying we need, you need to take more courses and get more business management, you're telling no to.
I think this is for the three employees probably to go to seminars or something to be trained.
Oh, then it's no. Yeah. What's it for?
I don't think it was for the managers.
I, I know that, that's why I'm saying, I agree with the finance committee, you know, it's a luxury we can't afford this year.
Cost nowadays, but anyways.
So what was the answer on that? You guys have been a little.
No.
I thought we were looking into a, uh, government surplus trailer.
Well, only FEMA has them.
And they're pretty busy right now.
We have North Pond, I should qualify for something FEMA.
Can't Charlie Dunlap get us?
And that eight thousand is every year, it's, it's every year.
We, we were talking about with the value.
We're gonna buy a trailer deck and we're gonna.
Three hundred a month for the trailer, but in this line, he has the trailer rental porta potty service, um, first aid kit service, bottled water, and any other costs related to the trailer, and a lot of it is, has been in the refuge fees line, so there's.
We're paying for it out of refuse fees, you're gonna be paying for your recycling out of that.
Right.
Any issues with that?
So, so, it's not an increase then, it's, it's just, did something else go down? No.
But I.
No, I don't, I know the answer, but I still have to ask.
But I would imagine at some point you'll be making a, a decision when they send you the, uh, their rates for the stickers for fiscal year twenty.
I know, just, let's get those buckets and put them in front of houses. It's cheaper. I know trash is gonna build up on the.
Sugar low on the next, at the next part of their meeting.
Alright. So it's a yes, because we gotta have a trailer, they gotta have a trailer.
So whether it's that or.
Right, the weather gets crappy up there and.
Unless you wanna buy a building.
So the trailer's basically three hundred dollars a month, right? Thirty-six hundred dollars.
He's gonna need a new one at some point, if you look.
He's already there.
They're already, you know, renting it.
Oh, well, we know, we see it, we're gonna have that. And that's an old one now.
Yes, it is.
And the contract is only till December twenty nineteen.
Really? There's an end date?
There is an end date.
Oh, hallelujah.
But I think obviously he'll be looking for, when he renews it, a newer trailer.
Yeah, well, maybe we can buy it for two grand and be done with it, or something.
Yeah, but what were the numbers on that? Weren't they like eighteen, thirty thousand?
Stupid numbers.
There was some absurd number they were looking for, that you guys.
Don't they do wonderful work with the back of tractor trailer trucks?
Yeah, a, a condex container, yeah.
Couldn't we make a tiny?
I currently have one that I might live in someday soon, yeah.
Well, I'm not sure whether or not our.
I know.
That, that's a touchy subject.
Yeah, depends.
We had those removed from businesses part.
We did, and we put them behind the fire department, and now they're part of our training program, but yeah, they're not allowed in this town.
Burn those on purpose.
I know.
Right, but that's a training exercise, that's.
Yeah.
Anyway, carry on.
Alright, stormwater mapping, hosting, and troubleshooting.
Oh, and I think that's something that they were saying the hundred thousand would cover for.
Okay, office supplies. Cause this is literally here because it's a new item.
It says was minor equipment, so they moved it out of one place to another.
Right, and this, and when we went to the finance committee, um, meeting, we weren't clear on that. You know, we got clarification from Randy that these weren't new, he was just renaming some of the existing ones. So they're, so they thought it was brand new, and that's why they said no.
So it's not a net more money, it's just, it's.
This one is, it's.
Right.
So these three yellow ones are just re-titling?
Alright.
So the yellow ones are yes.
And then, software, not a new line, okay, so not all of them are, uh, new. What about the stormwater mapping and hosting, was that, is that a new one?
They wanna cover that under the hundred thousand dollars on the next.
Right.
Okay, so we'll make that hold, and then a hundred K.
Which is what we just did with the employee on the.
Right.
First base. Cemetery.
New cemetery, that must be to map it out, is that what that is?
That was, was a survey too, Laura? Like, this wasn't the paving, right? Cause I know, you know, and by the way, I did try to find Bud.
We did too.
I went down, I actually went down there, I saw him, and when I turned around, after running in, and drove in there, the place was all locked up, and, and, but there was a detail cutting trees down, so the traffic was messed up, and I was trying to run him down to talk to him.
He's, um, very sick, and they had to cancel their trip to Ireland because he's so sick.
Oh, no.
So I don't know if he has what's going around, but.
Well, that's not good.
Yeah, that's not good.
Trip.
Yeah.
So we were trying to get clarification on.
Ronnie read off a lot of stuff.
She did, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and there were, yeah, there was a lot of stuff where we weren't sure if it was matching up with grave openings.
It, it looks like the finance committee just said, okay, we're gonna give you forty-five thousand.
Yeah, and that's.
And, there you go.
Yeah. But we just don't, but we don't know.
But that, does that come out of their revenue source?
This is on a tax rate.
How much is their, their revenues allowed to be touched as an offset each year under our model?
Usually we've been taking.
Six or seven thousand?
Sixty-eight hundred dollars, right, but, but. For improvements. So usually they budget, you know, sixty-eight hundred, and so they.
But that, this isn't for improvements, right? That's under capital, right?
That's under.
Oh, without operations?
It's gotta be operations.
It's operations, the improvement, you know, so they have.
Cause I, 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 I was talking to Laura about this, I thought some of the things that I recall them talking about was that they were gonna take some land that's within the parcel, that's undeveloped.
Right.
They need to create new parcels, new lots for burial, so they need to do a survey on that. Then they also wanna pave some roads down there. So those were the two things that I took out of that meeting, doesn't that sound familiar to you?
Correct, but.
Add some more trees.
But, so that.
Oh, and the new cemetery? Well, they need to do that to clear the land.
And it's the improvement, yeah, in the improvement line, you know, we were thinking, or.
They had sixty-eight thousand dollars in their budget, and their fiscal year nineteen budget was eleven-three, of which they had already spent eleven as of the time of the budget hearing. So they were increasing that line item from eleven-three to sixty-eight. So, I just wanna be clear, this fifty-six, seven, that they're requesting is additional above their existing budget. It's not, this is not the entire cemetery budget.
Yeah.
And the finance committee was willing to give them forty-five thousand dollars.
We were trying to, and I think they were looking at their write-up, but as we kinda went back to try to dissect, we could almost match up the operations line to one of these lines, and nothing for the sixty-eight thousand dollars, so we were trying to get.
But is Bud healthy enough to come in?
I don't know, I, I didn't call because they said that, you know, he was really, you know, really sick. But we did put a call.
We could meet with him and Sharon.
I called, I called, tried to, I left a message for Sharon.
Cause I think, was part of this also for paving, or is that somewhere else?
It's gotta be.
There's nothing, it says road repair, tree replacement and removal.
Yes.
Grave digging is increasing, the cost of grave digging is increasing.
Right, right, and we'd be okay increasing their tree.
To the old cemetery.
Yeah, it says grave digging, road repairs, minor equipment, weed whackers, office supplies, yada, yada, and then it was, an electric gate was two thousand dollars, survey new section five thousand, cameras thirty-five hundred, and electricity for camera six hundred.
So this down here, this line, all these individual ones, add up to the sixteen here.
Okay.
So this line has nothing to do with that.
Even worse.
Yeah, it's, right. So.
And then we weren't quite sure about the mower.
Right.
Cause they have, they need a new, it, cause nothing was said about a mower, but they left it there.
So I think they, you know, may have just carried over the number.
I think they did, because they just got a new mower.
So how many mowers does that give them?
They got one in eighteen for three thousand dollars.
I know, but her question is, were they, did they need another mowers, because they do have multiple employees, do they need two, two driving mowers?
Yeah, and a backup or, I don't know.
I didn't see any, well, they did minor equipment, weed whacker, leaf blowers, et cetera, so.
Anyways.
Intent, and we don't.
I know what their intent is, to correct a lot of things in one year, but we can't do it. Uh, so, I think we need to put a star on this.
Do you have a different number you're proposing?
I'm, I'm proposing that we look at their budget and give them X number of dollars and say, I would, I would probably suggest, uh, getting the survey done and get ready for more plots, you know?
And more of a bit of paving.
Well, try to do a little, a three-year plan, you know, perhaps.
I don't know, cemetery, could be CPC for cemetery?
I don't know, it's historical.
Maybe the old cemetery?
The old cemetery.
They did file an application.
Yeah, they did for that, for the stone.
So is, is there any decision under where it says new cemetery fifty-six, or is that whole thing on hold?
Yeah, hold the whole thing.
Yeah, I would.
You can't, you can't jump. I mean, their whole budget was eleven-three last year. Sorry, twenty-seven eighty, twenty thousand seven hundred eighty.
They're trying to fix a lot of years of neglect in one year, and we, and we can't do it, we can't do it.
I think in terms of whatever you're able to agree with the finance committee on some dollars toward addressing that backlog, in concert with what you're gonna support through the CPC article.
Right.
Is gonna go a long way.
Well, the CP.
For the old cemetery.
Is, right, takes care of the old cemetery.
Still dealing with a lot for the old cemetery, and that's gonna be a stepped-in thing for a couple of years.
Right. So I think if they can knock off a few things this year, and knock off, if we indicate to them that we would support something, a three-year plan.
Minor equipment, library.
They don't have a minor equipment on line?
This was one of those things you requested, right? You requested them to have the line.
Add the line item, so.
Wow.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
That's fine. Wally Park Lawn Care, I thought that was coming out of their monies.
The revolving.
Right. So it's no or no? Or yes and yes?
Just put revolving.
Revolving. Somebody already put no on.
It's on the copy.
What? On the drone.
Drone.
Somebody already put no on it.
So, on, on our side?
The finance committee approved, and I said no. Yeah.
That was just a typo.
It was a typo.
I misspelled, I misspelled no as yes, sorry.
Okay, well, let's start with the one ahead of that, the floor method, is that just minor equipment, I mean, right?
I, yes, it's minor.
So just say.
Can we just like remove it, or can they?
I mean, just get in their minor equipment?
Or add it, I should have, I really should have moved it over to operations, cause that's where I put it on the budget.
It doesn't qualify as a capital item under the, under the.
But it just.
Right, alright, so we're gonna put no on it here, and you'll move it over there?
Well.
Probably should put yes, or they should move it over there.
Okay, yes, and you're moving it.
Yes.
Yes, and operations.
Operations. No on the drone.
No.
Aw, man.
Computer stuff, I can't say anything to Doug, right?
Standard request.
These are standard, the, uh, the PCs.
So every year we do this?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the, the, obviously, the virtual server project.
Matching money to the grant.
To the big grant.
We got a ninety-one thousand three hundred and eighty-dollar grant, and this is the local share, and we are under a commitment to fulfill it by January of twenty twenty.
Alright, yes, yes, yes.
The Windows upgrade we talked about.
And we talked about the archiving.
Archiving of the email project. Town hall, to be determined.
So are all those yes?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, um, town hall, window, I mean, obviously, we have the report, I have that in my office, and we're gonna have to, uh, look at, Tianbon is supposed to be producing to me a one or two-page document that will give us the, um, highlights of what needs to be done immediately, but our initial read on the study wasn't necessarily an emergent issue for town hall, but it was for the fire department, and it had to do with the, the masonry work on the, uh, the caps around the gutter system and the roof over there. And that estimate, you know, in the, in the last document I looked at was about a million dollars. And you have it, you guys have, you, you have all of that information, and, um.
That's four million now.
I know.
Wait, wait, no, no, wait a minute, so. What we would be doing, um, if we do anything under the fire department would be probably a borrowing authorization for the design and permitting work for that issue. And then at the end of it, we could get a clear estimate on what the financing will need to be. So it's really something at this point, I think it's gonna be just a design appropriation. And that could be, you know, State House notes, a five-year thing for two to three hundred, you know, thousand dollars. So, but I am expecting that from Tianbon. And again, I mean, look what happened to this building, we just had, uh, the sprinkler system air compressor malfunction the other night, so there was a police call, and there was an alarm here in the wee hours. And the unit is functioning at the moment, but the new replacement is on hold, and you just did a reserve transfer request last night, and that's going along with the other reserve request before the finance committee at their meeting next Tuesday. So the issues are starting to happen with the building, the building is twenty-two years old, right, everything was finished in, in, um, in the fall of ninety-seven, and we occupied the building in February of ninety-eight.
The firehouse?
No, I'm talking about this building.
I get that, and a compressor is a consumable item over time.
No, that's, I'm just talking to the compressor, you know, all of those.
I was still, it gave about the million-dollar masonry repair at our tremendous.
Yeah, at the fire station.
That was built by the lowest bidder.
You campaigning? Because if you're campaigning, sir, you're gonna have to stay outside the building.
Sign your thing, or, yes, I doubt so.
In, in fact, Arthur, who's just walked in, has been reviewing the contents of the Tianbon report to see about the different projects, and one of them, of course, was the fire station.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, we have to come up with a big, uh, priority list, I guess.
Yeah, well, we're waiting for the synopsis from Tianbon to, so. So we're really not putting anything in here for now, but we may end up doing something when we meet with the finance committee, cause you're gonna have to determine what items you're gonna wanna act on in terms of any borrowings.
Right.
And that was something I spoke to last night during my preview of the Warren articles.
I understand.
Okay, what's next?
Two cruisers, standard request. Third cruiser is to do the swap to get the car for town hall.
Yep, so we can retire the ten-year-old Crown Vic.
Yeah.
That can't leave town.
Portable radio, standard request. Computer equipment, standard request. Radar unit for police cruiser, standard request. DFib that we're all gonna need as we do our budget, standard request.
Any issues with the standards?
No.
Okay.
I've added up the other, and it's about thirty-eight thousand dollars, and.
So we have, I know, we, we have the wifi over there which came out of the Wally computer system review, and then they do need a phone system, they can't get any parts.
Right, right, so what I'm suggesting is, we got a new chief, he wants to fix everything in one year, and I appreciate that. But again, it's thirty-eight thousand dollars, I'd say here's twenty-five thousand dollars, they can choose.
How much are you gonna give him?
Twenty-five.
Cause you're at twenty to do the wifi and the phone, you're at twenty-four.
Fifteen, nineteen, twenty-three?
Twenty-three, you're at twenty-three. Throw in the desk.
And I think he, I believe he's got an agreement with the school on the safety software, so.
Alright, thirty.
Forty.
Thirty?
Yeah.
What are those, well, now, Mel, what are these other items right here from seventeen hundred down to twenty-two, what do those add up to?
It's about thirty-eight.
Thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-one.
What does it add up to?
Thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-one. If they go right down.
Right, from sergeant, from sergeant desk right to school safety software. It's thirty-two. And you're at thirty, Russ.
Yeah, I, I added wrong, so. I added wrong, I'm back down to twenty-five now.
Twenty-seven, five.
Fair, sold.
Chief to determine.
No reserve, sold.
Okay, now the fire department phone system, that's just the matching share for the police department phone system.
Yeah. Seven thousand for hoses.
Is that a recurring one, Laura?
Would like it to become a standard.
It's going to become.
Was, haven't we had hose under capital each year for the fire?
We're, starting last year, and then they have a replacement plan, going on, you know, one a year, one truck a year. So that's why we kind of said it's.
But we're getting rid of three trucks.
We're getting two, but we don't even have the other two yet, one's coming this summer, and the other one. You, you've awarded the other one, and that's going to contract right now.
Yeah. Not every truck has holes on it, but anyways.
Okay.
Yeah. Radio equipment, ten thousand, standard request now. And five thousand for cameras for security. They seem to be working pretty good, no? You seem to get a phone call every time, so, it doesn't seem to be working.
So is that yes for all the fire department?
And that, well, the camera I think he needs is part of the ALS, cause of the drugs and the.
Sure. There you go. Okay.
Yeah, now, just to let you know, under public safety building where it says new phone system, we could take the fire department phone system request and the police department phone request and just put that as one single, one single item under public safety.
Correct.
Right.
Cause it really is.
Yeah, that's what I said.
It really handles those, and, and actually, by extension, it's gonna probably handle the animal control facility.
By extension, I see what you did there.
So.
What number would that be, B is two?
So, so once, so once Kevin's done trimming his budget, then the town accountant can move both of those things out of fire and police capital.
I'm sorry, we shouldn't have dog jokes with Russ here, I'm sorry, Russ.
Are, are there any dog jokes?
I just, wow, wow, and I saw, I saw Twitch as a shadow movement.
Okay, Selectman's budget session resuming after changing the batteries, it's seven o'clock, here we go, Joe.
Thank you, so we're at the I Plan Table E Permit Program.
Can we put an H next to that to hold it?
Yeah. Alright, addition at the DPW Garage, this addition will be forty-five by seventy.
This is, this was easy, right?
Alrighty, emergency generator, we don't have enough after everything we figured out to do that, we're gonna need twenty-five thousand more.
I think we have it, Joe.
Yeah, so that's out, we, we, we've just gotta put our ass in gear and get that done this year, between the monies we have sitting in other accounts, we just gotta do it.
So all those will be no's.
Right. Maybe that'd be a great position for the clerk.
One or buy one?
Nope, Joe was working with me on that.
We went round and round, and we were up in the air, and I kinda, if I, if I make it to the clerk's position, I'll, I'll get that thing done by Christmas. Cause we have monies left over.
Yep.
So it's just a matter of, do we wanna spend it in, in this whole process of moving that generator over there?
Or getting it in?
Or just getting something that fits there?
You have some money left over from the above ground storage tank.
Right.
Correct.
From the salt shed.
Right.
And for building the building.
So there's enough there to put a generator there that probably belongs there. Versus by the time we get done moving that one, and, we know what we have for issues here, we get it, you know.
I see you have this well in hand.
You just don't turn all the lights on at the fire department when we're on power, that's all. You know, the police just can't use their laptops in their building, but they can use them in their car.
It's all good.
Right, I think so, and we've been that way for a while, they get it. Plus those new fire trucks are real efficient. So maybe, maybe it'll take less.
They got generators on the fire trucks.
They do have generators on the fire trucks. If we got them all heating blankets for the, the rooms there, then we can lower the heat some more.
Don't sell past the close, next.
Well, it's a million dollars to fix that wall, maybe that wall becomes a sunroom, anyways. Alright, so generator will take out.
I'm switching you to decaf territory.
Oh, I haven't had anything, FCC radio license.
No.
Washer dryer for animal control.
Seems sensible.
Okay, I wasn't sure what your answer was gonna be on that, Russ. Okay, laptop and scanner printer, that's gonna make both of those.
That's part of your, it's gonna come out of your alternative AGOAM West Springfield.
Yep.
Well, that's, that, that's a local receipt increase, but yeah, it's.
It's gonna offset the local, cause we need to have that desk for the people from out of town not sitting at our ACO's desk.
So Laura's already putting in the local receipt information, the other thing that Joe needs to do is just.
Once again, I'm gonna get over.
The other twenty-five hundred and then, between the two.
Twenty-five hundred to five thousand.
It'll be, it'll be, it's, it's gonna be a seventeen thousand, five hundred dollar increase in the local receipts.
Right.
Part of the revenue body, okay?
Alright, buoys and mornings.
Well, that's annuals.
Yeah, it's annual, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, lake data logger, annual, I guess.
Yes.
Have enough data loggers, have more security cameras down there, replace the ones that are two years old.
Right.
They might be foggy on a foggy day. Oh, the treatment, I thought they were gonna go get bonding for their monies through, oh, no, they, they took it out of that package.
Environmental bond.
Yeah, they took that, yeah.
So that's.
For CPC, wasn't it coming out of CPC? No, they, they pulled it out of there.
It is, it is.
Yeah.
Bond council has determined it is an eligible item.
No, we understand that, but he never made, he withdrew his request.
Right.
From CPC, and then did not get the funding at the state level that.
Like he had hoped.
Assured us we were going to get.
Well, I, I even spoke about it at the hearing.
You did.
And was told that that was no longer under consideration.
Correct.
So, that's why they could go forward with other projects.
On the silence?
And I have reminded them that not having done that even through this budget through CPC, those funds would not, if those funds aren't in place, they're not gonna be there for a treatment of the lake next April either.
Right.
Not unless we have a special between now and a year from now.
We, we just might, you never know with those specials, they just creep up out of nowhere.
Well, if we do, you know, it'd be one of those things about whether or not we should have, especially when everybody had been informed of the need to go through this.
That was a, that was a, yeah, I was just gonna leave that alone.
Alright, it's a no-no.
Yes, no-no.
Alright, canal dredge design, that was a no, okay.
That also is, we had investigated that, and it is also a fundable project.
It is. Yes, it is.
Design and permitting piece.
Yeah. Alright, the first three are standard, paving project, construction and improvements, and then.
Okay, here we go.
Here we go, where are we with the, the bonding thing that I was trying to do, Carl, where, where did we end up? Did we figure out a number?
Well.
I mean, what number would work in our world?
Schedule for two million.
Right.
We gave you guys the different schedules, the finance committee's got them too, and it's.
Right.
So you would have to determine what projects.
We had enough debt rolling off to cover the two million off of our, what we anticipated.
Well, we have to look at the.
Cause that kinda goes hand in hand with this, doesn't it? I have my clerk adding it up as we speak.
When you.
Expect any of that from me in a year from now?
Two point four, just what's right here.
It's two point four.
Yeah, so, when you add them all up, you just need to figure out what is it you wanna put as a bond issue, because you're dropping off. It was fifty-one this year, but you basically took that one to cover the dump truck. And then two sixty-eight next year, well, a good, about a hundred and twenty-something of that is gonna be your fire trucks.
Yes.
So that's already spoken on, so you got a portion of something dropping off next year, and then the following year, another one forty-seven.
Hey, and what did we figure out, two million would cost us, and that whole bonding?
Two billion?
Right, that was kind of the number we were at? Short, short four hundred.
You need three million, cause you're gonna need, there was equipment in here too, we were looking to load in that same, in the same package. Granted, there may be some relief on the senatorial side book. From the Commonwealth, yes.
Right, but that's.
That's not a guarantee.
That's not guaranteed.
Not at all, but I mean, I, I think you really have to look at that.
Well, I think we.
Load in a piece of equipment of about the same effectual life.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you really look at that, and then, so, I didn't even add that up yet, but there's one.
Two, three, three and a quarter?
Three and a quarter right there, but I mean, that's to say, and we really wanna do that. That recycler is the big, that recycler was a big deal, but it was that much.
Eighty-something, right? Yeah, eighty-four, yeah, it was.
No, he's got, oh, yeah, yeah.
Eighty-four, the, the usual was forty.
Yeah, so that's about, that's a big deal, cause then we could actually patch some of these roads in the winter.
Right.
And make our own hot.
Well, you know, we also gotta remember, we're gonna be getting chapter ninety monies, alright?
True.
Okay, and then we can look here, I, I'm gonna say this, and I think Carl's mentioned it too, we got a lot of things designed. We need to design something else.
Do we need to design something else, or what did you mean?
What I'm saying is, why don't we tackle a few projects rather than investing a quarter of a million dollars?
The two fifty for the Granville Road.
Design for something that's gonna happen five years down the road.
You're talking about a tip project when you say that?
Cause you gotta get it on the tip, I mean, look at the Cowles Bridge, that's in the same boat, right? They let, they let it go and let it go, when they realized that they needed it, they were too far down the road to get it designed in time to get it, now they're trying to, everybody's pulling in, cause they're at twenty-five percent design right now for that bridge, and now they wanna try to bid it in October. And everyone's gonna go crazy to try to get it done. I, I, you know, and Granville Road is gonna turn into a resurfaced project if it doesn't turn into a.
Okay, so, going back.
Project, project.
Going back to Joe's question, on the two million dollar bond for roads, what years of amortization schedule would you wanna know, I have an eight-year one, I have a nine-year one, I got a ten-year one. Which one are you interested in, Joe?
Ten.
The ten-year one?
Cause you'll get ten years out of all these projects.
Okay, um, or more.
Well, yeah, truthfully, or more, yeah.
Okay, so that, ten years would be.
But the payment's linear, right?
Okay.
Interest, principal crosses over, but the payment's linear, right, so we can, for the math, it's easy.
Yeah, so ten years would be two hundred and ninety-six thousand starting out, and then two hundred and eight at the end, so that's, this is equal and descending. So this is equal and descending, so there you go, you wanna see what it looks like, there it is.
So, if we went with a two million dollar bond for ten years.
There's a ten, there's another.
We're, we're talking about.
There's a ten year.
Also the machinery, also.
No, that's just, it's at two point four for just these road issues we have.
This is two point four million dollars, just here.
Nothing to equipment.
That's what.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm suggesting.
Yes, sir.
That if we do a two million dollar bond for ten years.
Yeah.
That we incorporate everything in here, remembering that we're gonna get chapter ninety's monies, and there's a possibility that we'll get some state monies for some of this machinery.
Oh, the air mock stuff?
The air mock.
Yeah, we submitted that document to the, the state, I think it's what, seven hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment, Doug, does that add up?
There's only three hundred recon, three between a quarter.
Four hundred thousand right here.
Is it four?
For all the vehicles?
Yeah, the excavator, this, the loader, the tractor wood mower, asphalt recycler, vibrator roller.
But, but even the finance committee said no to the mini excavator and no to the tractor.
Right.
I got tractors, you know.
And as old as you.
Fifty-eight, fifty-sixty years old.
Right.
And we still have parts for them. I don't believe.
Three sixty-two for all of it, now I didn't, I didn't judge, you know.
No, understood.
They took out the sixty.
I, I mean, you get on the internet and you get parts for them.
Doug, do you have, you got the paving machine, the roller?
Yep, three sixty-two for everything, including the mini excavator?
Yep.
Take out them, oh.
That's what I came, I came up with.
Three sixty-two?
Three sixty-two.
Look at that.
Now, if she says it, it must be right.
That's right.
Excel says it.
So you're at, so we were at two million, you wanna do two point three six two, Russ, is that what you're thinking?
No, I wanna do two million.
And include that stuff in there.
Include everything, because there's items that I don't think are necessary, and just say, Randy, let's sit down as road commissioners, and let's map it out.
And this, and this may come back through the state anyways.
How much are we projected for chapter ninety?
Uh, chapter ninety, you get a hundred and eighty thousand for every one hundred million authorized. We generally only see two hundred authorized, so it's about three hundred and sixty, it comes out to about three seventy-two.
It's close.
One-year payment on the note.
You know, you have, you have ninety-seven thousand in that account right now, cause you got a supplemental state appropriation last fall.
Yes.
They did the supplementals.
But I wouldn't use that.
So you got a hundred there now.
No, 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 we got enough rolling.
You could actually go buy that machine now, but.
Yeah.
With the chapter ninety authorization you have, but.
Right.
So you got ninety and, well, close to four hundred thousand you're gonna have, right?
Right.
So that'd be my suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Is to take, put two million towards the two point four million dollar projects in front of us, plus the three sixty-two, so we have two point seven, two point eight million in front of us between equipment and projects.
Right.
And you wanna give them two.
Right.
And realistically, three sixty-two may go away if we get the stuff from the state.
Right.
But we don't know, when, when, when do you know that?
Okay, but, but.
July.
But don't you have, don't, don't you have to word them as two separate borrowing authorizations, cause equipment would be one, and then the paving and infrastructure would be another, because the, because the equipment one, you could put, you could, you could actually put almost all of them in there and say, and put a dollar amount.
Or take any other action there too.
And this is furthermore, and this is to be offset by the receipt of any grants and all that.
Right.
So. And then that would allow you to get whatever item you want to get out of that borrowing authorization, unless you would, unless you just wanna be firm on the exact items you wanna get.
Right.
Well, I mean, I, and I, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with all of these projects. But if you were to slide out a project, you can slide in another project that's on there, that's on his list somewhere right below this, or right, you know, right near it. You know? Not gonna pick a winner here, but, you know, there was a couple that, you know, shouldn't be done yet. But then there's others that need to be done that didn't make this list because the other ones are on the list. And that's what the road commissioners and the DPW director need to sit down and hash out.
Right.
Right, but from our point of view, so we would have to see how things step in, because as you make these decisions, you're not just making them for fiscal year twenties drop-off, you're also making them for fiscal year twenty-ones. So you need to be cognizant of that.
Yes.
Cause some of it will be short-term borrowed and so forth, and then also in fiscal year twenty-two, you got twenty-one grand dropping off. Twenty-three, thirty-six hundred, then twenty, twenty-four, you get almost fifty thousand dropping off.
Yeah, but you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna murder us with these building stuff. We're, we're gonna have a million dollars on the table for just the fire to button break.
Exactly, you know, we're sitting here just talking about these two things for DPW, but you haven't actually done anything for the buildings.
And we know we already got a commitment for one point two million.
Right, but that was increased.
That's not on here, though, is it?
Not on here.
It's not on here, but it is in your budget, and it shows as a net increase on principal and interest. Because that, it was explained to people that that would be additional money for taxes, so. The rest of this is trying to manage within your cap.
But that's gonna show on your, right. Just like we did with the school debt exclusion, that's gonna show on your pie chart where your dollar goes.
Right.
Be a North Pond slice of the pie.
Right.
Uh, yeah, Laura can create, Laura, Laura can create a, you know, a, a slice of pie that says North Pond is a debt exclusion. Even though it's normally a category.
So if we take out the, the mini excavator, it's two ninety-three.
It's not normally a category, Laura.
But you have to leave the excavator in there just in case the state funds it.
We can, but it, you know, it will end up being.
A slice.
You know what I'm saying, I, you know, I think there's some flexibility there, and I'm just looking at the payment of two million dollars over the ten years.
Blueberry.
No, I got that.
And I think it's, it shows that we're gonna try, take the initiative to, to knock off several projects and, and purchase some equipment, but I think we need.
But you understand that, once you start down this process and you've identified these roads. You, you don't have any more capacity to add stuff in from that other list of years two through six that equaled eighteen million.
Yeah, that's not going away.
Do you understand that?
Right.
Sorry?
So, but I mean.
This is gonna be just like the school, the school.
Not rolling, not, not, not the rolling notes.
In the end, it's gonna.
Huh?
In the end, it's gonna. Not for a couple of years, but in the end, it's.
Well, these are longer terms, I mean, these, you're looking at what, ten years on this note, they do five-year notes for six hundred thousand. You're looking at doing ten-year notes for two million plus.
Right, but you've got, look at what the backlog of work looks like, so.
Well, we, we can also.
Well, I'm looking at it, don't forget, Chuck, there's a bigger, there's a much bigger document than that, that goes over all the six years that equaled the eighteen.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
One.
That was it, by the way.
The two million dollars you're talking about borrowing, okay, for all these projects, okay? That doesn't leave you a whole lot of money to borrow for other things that are coming up.
The building.
Yeah.
That's what I said, right.
No, we know that, yeah.
Well, you'd just be borrowing, you just have to add more to borrow for that too.
We gotta fix the roads, there's no way to sit here and, and pass on the roads again.
Well.
That, there, well, nothing.
You can, you can go up to your levy limit.
So when we get, we get rid of three million, we're, we're, we're at our levy limit, right?
You're at your, you're at the levy limit, but what I'm saying is if you cut some of your other things out, like the past few years, you've had like a million dollars under your levy limit.
Right, but we also can't jump up taxes like that, plus we also just.
We're jumping off of North Pond anyways.
With the one point two million dollars from North Pond, and they're gonna start paying for their.
Well, that's not your guys' fault.
Yeah, I understa, well, it will be when they get their.
It's Mike, it's Mike Ross behind me, I'm going on, so.
I'm just saying.
No, I understand it.
So really, well, we need.
You can't send people a tax bill that goes up, you know, we, we understand, I understand where you're coming from, but you also can't.
All those good years of savings.
Right, that we did a great job controlling the budget, but not by delaying things that needed to get done, it was prudent.
Well, yes and no.
So what you, what you really need, what you really need to do is to figure out, I mean, we have these numbers about, like, what is actually dropping off, but you've gotta say, okay, what, what's gonna go in? What is the policy decision that's gonna be made to replace the debt that's dropping off? You've already made some of those decisions with the dump truck and the two fire trucks.
Right.
So now you're looking at roads and some other rolling apparatus, and then obviously some capacity to start getting, uh, building projects underway through a design or something like that. So then we just gotta figure out what are those total allocations you wanted to be, run those debt service models that equal that. And then we're able to see how that matches with the amount that we have on our debt service now and what's rolling off.
And that's. And we may be able to accomplish this with what's rolling off, but you're right, come next year, you're not gonna have much rolling off, and you still wanna look at roads and then the buildings.
Well, that's exactly what I'm.
A reality check on the buildings for sure by then.
Right, in other words, you, you don't have that, you then don't have the capacity for year two, three, four, five and six of the other three million each year.
No, understood, yeah.
But it's gotta fit within, this is the general fund stuff, so it's gotta fit within this. Cause none of those other issues, that, everything you're talking about is all general fund issues, they're not water sewer issues.
No, absolutely, right.
So, so we need to have some sort of a, of an idea of what the, um.
So, right, so the two million cost us how much for a year for two million? Now, we, we go ten because, right, three hundred grand a year, and how much do we have rolling off for this year? Other than the fire truck, or that, or that's spoken for?
Well, I mean, we'd have to, if we, if you take the fire truck debt service model and, you know, I mean, I'm sure the dump truck is, the dump truck is fine with the fifty-one, generically speaking, so.
Right.
If you're jumping off one sixty-eight now, and you already gotta accommodate for the fire trucks, that's gonna be about a hundred, what do you have in there for the fire trucks for next year? A hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty? Cause, cause remember, Joe, we made that at twelve years, remember, it was, it was ten for one truck and fifteen for another, and you and I set it at twelve.
Twelve for both, right.
Because that's what bond council wanted.
Right, so one point two cost us.
Right, so it's one point two for twelve years. So.
Wasn't it, what was it, a hundred and?
So say that's a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, that leaves you with probably, that probably leaves you with about a hundred and thirty.
Right.
Okay, for twenty, and then another hundred and forty-seven for the year after, so that leaves you with about two. Well, there you go, there, there's some money, that leaves you with you about.
You're right there.
Hundred and thirty and a hundred and forty, leaves you about two eighty, two ninety, which is where you are.
Right, with, with just the two million.
Right. Right.
Right. And our thoughts aren't to go longer than ten years, even though they're road projects?
Well, the trucks, see, that's just it, when, no, ma.
The equipment's one thing.
Yeah, you only go like seven years on stuff like.
On equipment, but the roads that we're looking at.
Yeah.
Do we go longer than ten, or do we not?
I don't think you'd wanna.
That's fine.
Cause by then, you're crack sealing them.
Oh, yeah, oh. Not even going there.
Well, let me ask you, these numbers that you just added up on all these roads, are they all full depth reclamation rebuilds, or are they milling overlays?
Well, there are various projects, I mean, and I don't think that this project list is final. I mean, what's on here is.
Is what made it.
Huh? No, it's not a wish list, he did it by, based on what he thought.
The package we have.
And the road commissioner's opinion may differ, and we will have to reconcile that, but my, the point is, is he has, he stopped it, or we stopped him at two point four million, and you could easily take, you know, three projects out of here and move three projects up and still be at two point four million, or, or more.
Right.
Right, there's eighteen million in total, we can't fix.
Well, the board is, now his, like, did you decide you wanted to pave the dirt part of Nicholson Hill?
No, we didn't, that's my point.
Right, I think Doug's right.
And the same thing with, you know, hate to say it, Robin Road.
Well, I'll say it, we told him someday, not, not three years.
This day, right?
Right.
You know, we accepted the way he said, you know, we're gonna put it in the list of things to do, we didn't get it up to the front.
Right, because, but even if you did the drainage on that for a buck seventy.
Beta program.
Right.
Neither one fits into the beta program.
So, I get it, so.
The culvert's on under that.
Correct.
Right.
But, you know, and, and there's other roads that are, that are older, that have been accepted ways for longer, that are in worser shape, or as bad a shape, that need to be done. We get it, that's, we will reconcile it, but I think we need to get our hands around the dollars and the time. So I, my opinion, and I've, I've said it before, is I don't know what the dollar amount needs to be, I thought it was a little bit north of two million, but I think the time is more than ten. Granted, you're gonna chip seal them, but you take a thirty-year mortgage on a house and put a roof on it in fifteen, I get it, that's, that's, that is an asset of that length, I mean.
My only concern about that one, Dougie, is you also have to go and crack seal the other roads you didn't do the paving on to prolong them till you can do them.
I get it. You gotta put a roof on that, on a house that doesn't have a, you have to buy, doesn't have a mortgage, you gotta put a roof on a house every fifteen years, whether, you know, pretty much it's gonna need it. I get that, I, but these, if you go and do a full depth reclamation of, and I'm just, I'll pick a winner, you know, of uh, North Long Yard Road, you're gonna get twenty years of life out of that road, I would think, right? Before you have to do another full, you may even have to overlay, I don't know.
We, we know, we won't touch it for forty.
We won't touch it for forty, but you're gonna get twenty.
Let's face it, right, let's be realistic, we won't touch it for forty, especially after we do that, we won't.
So I, I think you could go a little higher on a longer note, but that's my opinion.
Right.
And yeah, and, and so some of the equipment, if we, if, you know, it should be a shorter note, cause that, that's just how the town's generally done it, but this is a much longer-lived asset. How long did you pay on this building?
Twenty years.
It's probably twenty years, yeah.
How long did you pay on a firehouse?
Too long.
That was twenty, that just expired too.
Correct, now it needs a million dollars worth of work.
Oh, more than that, that was just that one item.
Just the bricks.
You still have to do the HVAC too.
Can we just put siding over it?
I just think it should be a bigger note for a longer period of time, and we don't even get used to it.
Yeah, fiscal year twenty, the fire station debt drops off, the police station debt drops off, a DPW truck dropped off, which of course you replaced. And then the library HVAC.
But you're gonna be replacing all of the building debt with new building debt, I assure you.
And that's what it is, that's exactly what it is, it's building debt and, and.
You've already spent it, it's already done, so it's just a matter of, and I, I appreciate Russ's point about, you know, the chapter ninety monies coming in too, and that needs to offset, obviously, it's, that's why you have it.
Well, part of that, I think part of that's been used to leverage designs for.
Right.
Multi, you know, larger projects, so the question is, is, do you, do you not go and design any more projects now, just start using that to do billing?
But you, you'll fall behind there, I get it.
Right, but, look at it this way, Doug. Tammy Lane Jeffrey Circle, when do you think the last time it was paid?
Well, I probably wasn't even alive.
Over forty years.
Right, oh, maybe I was alive.
Just.
No, I know, I get it.
But in the, and that's just a handful of roads that are twenty-five, thirty, forty years old that we could use the money to just resurface them, we don't need to, you know, just like Suffield did. They just resurfaced all those roads. Now, yes, I went after those roads that they say were crummy this, today, they are crummy. Whoever did that should be shot, but, but, but.
Oh, Suffield, some of their roads?
No, but, no, I'm talking about when they bonded before Melissa Mack.
Yeah.
Where they went through and just repaved their roads.
Did they mill them before they paved them?
I think they milled them and paved them, but they were, they were beautiful, they're still beautiful. This, I have this hacker who did the job down there, I don't know.
So that's a separate project, and I don't go too far out of, off, off the beaten path, but some of those roads are not public ways. So they are on tenuous legal ground in the first place, that they're spending any money over there, so.
Whereas with the used community.
And, yeah, they, they did, correct, and which we spoke to, was spoken to last night, um, some of those, you know, community block grants were used on that, cause it's eligible money for that, where chapter ninety money's not, right? Okay, but.
Russ was just a dog catcher, wasn't he?
And I get it, you know, but you go over by, you know, Woodlands, what's that, Woodland?
Woodland Ridge.
Circle?
The circle one, right, when you come off of Depot on the South Long Yard on the right, that, that's probably in the same age as Tammy Lane and Kimberly in the same, that needs to get done. Could it be, could that be, but it's also a low-traffic piece, could that get milled and paved?
Just, some of those might lend themselves to a shim and stone, and stone.
Right, right, but my, the other thing, but then you've got the other ones, you know, North Loomis, or, sorry.
North Long.
North Long Yard.
North Long Yard in a section of South Loomis.
Sunny Side's gonna be a brutal one if the state doesn't do it, because they've, they've killed us with the Cowells Bridge, that's the gift that keeps on giving.
Tell them, you told everybody that in the meeting.
Tell them all you want.
But there's other roads in town that are going in that direction, you know, South Long Yard, we got a piece of it last year, the R piece of fifty-seven is now a disaster.
And, and I envisioned us being able to.
Well, that, fifty-seven, that was a certain former DPW director who decided on basically a shim coat, not to mill, it was just a shim coat, and that was a mistake.
Correct, cause now.
Oh, the section that's got.
The, the section that the shim coat is now missing in very large chunks.
Right.
But anyway, but that stuff's gonna have to get done, I.
I mean, I envisioned maybe another year-end transfer for some more milling and paving like we did last year.
Right, and, and that's what I would be advocating.
Thing too, one thing we haven't entered into this discussion is whether or not you wanna make any contributions from the stabilization account. You've got about two eight, you know, two nine, you could take some money out to buy the equipment purchases with those, or to do some paving. I think the people, I don't think they would object to you taking some money out for some paving out of it. Not a lot of it, but just a portion of it. The last withdrawal we took out, did not, we did not get out of turn out of investment cause that was the design for the sewer ring around Potterville Road and those other neighborhoods, and, and that did not, um, end up having a a support vote after we had done all the design and the work and lined up grants.
Well, how about?
You could've bought a fire truck with that money.
How about this, just throwing it out, if we did a two million dollar bond, okay? And then took four hundred thousand out of stabilization, that would hit to you two point four, all right? And then we would sit down with Randy and say, have a frank conversation, look at the beta plan and program. And then also look at some of the neighborhoods.
Joe, with all that rolling stock equal to four hundred, is that what you, was it three seventy?
If you take out the mini, it's two ninety-three.
I think it's a dollar amount issue as much as it is.
Right, absolutely, right.
But then we could look at roads that, like Tammy and Jeffrey Circle, haven't been paved in forty years, they've fallen apart. Probably owe them a paving, you know, uh, and, and look at doing several roads that probably deserve a paving, low-traffic areas, but they're done, people are happy, they, when they clear the snow, the snow would actually be off the road and not ice. Like some roads were subjected to this year, so.
You know what I was told when I moved to town and I moved, not moved onto a dirt road? I was told by the DPW director, if I didn't like it, go back to where I came from.
Right, and I wish Davis Road was still dirt, but, but unfortunately, they put that stone down.
Irish who that we're running into is some of these last three or four years, or ten years when we converted some of these dirt roads to paving. That put us behind with all the paving roads. The problem with some of our issue that we're running into is some of these last three or four years, or ten years when we converted some of these dirt roads to paving, that put us behind with all the paving roads.
Oh, okay.
Because we did full depth reconstruction.
Well, not just that, but some of them.
And then some of them were supposed to be two hundred thousand and ended up being a half a million for half a road.
Oh, yeah, and even Bugby came in more.
And Bugby came in, it was a four hundred thousand.
Yeah, and that's falling apart.
And how many cars go down Bugby Road?
Well, I wouldn't say it's falling apart, but it's already starting to shit, it's already been, the pavement's been cut twice into it, there were dips in it.
I'm sorry, ensuring it's.
So that's a full depth reclamation getcha, it doesn't getcha the twenty years.
Alright, so two and four hundred out of stabilization, and a long discussion.
Or three fifty, something like that, but yeah.
We can put it down and digest it tonight, but I think it's a plan, it, it achieves what we set out to achieve, obviously, uh.
But what do you do on your end for the two million, do you just put in what the, the interest is gonna be in payment, or do you put in a two million?
To see if the interest in the principal.
Right, okay.
No, they don't put the whole amount, they.
I know, I'm just.
They just. They take one of these, uh.
Yeah, we're all set.
We got it, we got it, we got it. She's got some grants, we're fine. We'll figure it out.
So does it also include the, the machinery part of that, with that?
Right.
That'd, that'd be my suggestion.
Right.
And. If the good senator is successful.
Then that, right, that's just more towards roads.
Right.
Well, no, he can't, he's not giving us anything with roads, it's only equipment.
Understood, but if, if that whole, that whole dollar.
That money moves around unless.
You could move it to roads.
Right.
Thank you, let's gang up on them now.
But, but you won't know that by the time.
Absolutely, you won't know anything until. What we're saying is. If in fact we had a bond.
Right.
For two million, plus the four hundred thousand.
Within the same article?
Right, and this came in.
Right.
We would have an additional four hundred thousand to do more roads, right, right.
Alright, so you wouldn't write the, you wouldn't. You wouldn't put language in that borrowing authorization to say that this could be lowered by the receipt of state funds, because you'd just be using them somehow.
No, no.
Correct.
Alright.
I, I don't think we wanna mention any of this.
Nepedee's Stormwater Compliance. That was the hundred thousand dollar yes.
Yeah, they, they split that baby up, we moved everything into here.
It's eleven hundred bucks, but everybody else got done with that number, but.
I'm not even sure it's capital myself, but.
Storage building.
Well, it's definitely not capital by the time the way they just carved it up, it's gonna have to move around in different buckets on the budget from here, and what's left will sit in cap, in wherever.
The storage building is one at the transfer station?
Yeah, this is the one where they got the pad down there already, and it's gonna go on top of it, so that they can take stuff out of their building, so that you don't have to put an addition on it.
There you go, that's, that's thinking. And once we get that government trailer, that'll save us three hundred dollars a month.
So it's a yes for the storage building? Finish the carpet replacement.
Yeah, this is, this is for the director. This is for the director and the assistant.
I've been here six years, and we've been doing carpet for six.
I, I've been here, okay, well, good, because I've been here for four, and they've been doing it to paint it, Jesus, I think they buy one block at a time.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's, there you go.
Doug. I, Carl, I'm just having fun with you.
So, my recommendation, when we meet with the FINCOM, we, we should put a yes here, will, will be to move this to the special town meeting warrant, like we've done in previous years.
Yeah.
Okay, but if I come, if I go visit the library next time the fire trucks are outside, and the parking lot is carpeted, I'm gonna be pissed.
And is the new person at the library pick out the color, or does the old person leave and pick out the color?
She's here till, uh.
June, right?
June, till I.
This is June thirty.
No, she doesn't get to pay it, new person.
And the new person's not gonna like the color, and it was.
Well, we'll change it, we can change it.
It's five thousand on next year.
Some new purpose.
Finish the finished carpet replacement program.
And we're, it's a no to the data.
Another five thousand for more painting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not gonna deal with the data rec.
Right, so those two are gonna be special, right?
Yeah.
Right, but we, we have to still go through that.
Ah, alright.
Think we're in church, alright, Skag Tiger Lawn Mower for Rail Trail.
I thought. They.
I'm sorry.
No, you're right, but the problem is, it's a big place, and those mowers are just.
Just brutal, what is seven miles, Carl?
The trail's six and a half.
Six and a half.
So they need a mower.
So it's really thirteen, because it's up and back, it's on both sides.
Right. Do we wanna do that at the special also?
Two passes on two.
Because they are gonna need a lawnmower, right away.
Okay.
Who what?
Do it at the special.
Yeah.
Now, tree removal, I thought they already had money in the budget, and they already had got a quote to do it now.
You did a grant application, and Joe signed it, and said we would do a local share.
We did.
Which was for more work.
Which is the twenty-nine, see the twenty-nine?
Right.
That's the local share that Joe agreed to.
Right, first big project over there.
For the tree removal and the, uh.
So the tree removal root repair came, say, to thirty thousand regardless.
Yeah.
Then that lady applied for a grant to try to cover all of that, she did.
Jeannie, Jeannie.
Yeah.
So if Jeannie gets the grant, then we don't really need that money.
Okay.
But we won't know.
So we have to put in.
Right, wasn't that?
We, we have a local share commitment.
Yeah, but the local share wasn't thirty grand.
Uh, no, I think it was a little bit more than that.
Really?
Yeah, but, but back to the.
Hold on, I got.
Did they expend any money for tree removal?
No. They had one tree come up, I know that.
Because they came to me and said, you know, can we get a quote, and I said.
The problem is Doug, is some of the stuff you may be looking at may, even if it's in her budget, it may not tell you everything descriptively.
Right.
We met, she worked with Joe and I after that too.
She did.
Alright, but, it's, there's, right.
That's all I'm saying.
So it's asphalt, tree.
Substantial root damage needs to be repaired, it's so extreme, it's a safety hazard, but she brought with us, I thought she actually left it.
She did.
She did an application, there's an application.
Oh, that's for the. I thought she brought the grant application. This was the paving.
Without so much.
But that's just the last one.
Yeah, this lane's paving, full depth pavement repair, twenty-nine thousand, three twenty-five.
Right.
So it's not rail trail, it is root damage repair, but that's to repave it. Maybe I'm mistaken, I thought I saw, I thought she had brought me a copy of a grant application that she had filled out, and we left it in. Okay, here it is. Shrub work.
So if you look at this, you'll see there's four projects. This one's got, project one is like forty-nine, project two is twenty-nine, thirty-five, project three, sixty-seven hundred, project four, thirty-two thousand, see, they kept saying the word total cost, well, they're all subtotals. These are all subtotals.
Okay, solar powered.
Because, because obviously, you know, this, this and this don't equal this, they're all subs.
Crosswalk at Depot.
Solar powered.
Right, for thirty-two thousand. Um, for light.
That was part of the grant though.
Right, right. But then they also got relining middle yellow line, six, six miles, and they have a price of six thousand seven hundred and forty-six.
Yeah, that's for the tape, that's for that, that tape stuff.
You gotta be kidding me.
That's the estimate they got.
How about one of those little machines where you put the can in there, and you walk it down, and it sprays?
How about a summer help, twelve dollars an hour?
There you go, you just, just go down with the freaking thing, I mean.
My God.
Right off the mower.
Can they go in a straight line now?
Hey.
The Park and Rec has one for Wally Park, all you gotta do is quite a couple cases of paint.
Well, there you, okay, but there's the number, that's where it came from, okay, so what's your pleasure, that's all. The only reason why that gets segregated and pulled out is because it's over twenty-five.
Okay, so you're saying our share, if they got the grant, would be thirty thou, twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-five?
Well, yeah, because it's, you know, we, we had to do a certain, um. Let's see, the, the Mass Trail Grant requires the applying agency provide a minimum of twenty, of twenty percent of the projects, so, who's got a calculator?
Who goes a calculator?
Yeah.
Okay, forty-nine oh three. Okay, twenty-nine, three twenty-five.
Twenty-nine, three twenty-five.
Sixty-seven, forty-six. Thirty-two, two twenty.
Yep, it's forty-four, one ninety-four.
That's the total. Okay, so twenty percent of that would be?
Oh, eight thousand.
Eight thousand, so why don't we just put, why don't we just approve it for eight thousand?
Eight thousand.
The twenty-nine will be eight thousand.
Yep.
And just put the word twenty percent grant share in your notes, okay?
And, and then can we go back up to the forty-nine hundred for tree removal?
Okay.
Do they have money in their budget right now to do the tree removal, because I thought they were gonna do that during the winter time?
They had someone out there doing it.
Rail trail expenses is fifty-four hundred dollars, rail trail vandal, they only have two rail trail liners.
Right.
Johnson.
Okay, one's fif, it's fifty-four hundred. It's what they got, Russ.
But.
Right there.
Have they expended it?
Two thousand of it.
Two thousand.
Well, is this up to date the expenditure here, for FY ninety, nine, ninety-eight?
Pretty much.
On the, yes, on the.
Okay.
Okay, so they.
That's within a couple of weeks.
Right.
So they don't have enough money to do?
No, because that's covering all their other expenses, and then don't forget they do partner with the, they have a nonprofit group that they work with.
Friends of the rail trail. Okay, I thought they were planning to do that this past winter and had the fund, so.
They might have actually.
At least that's what somebody told me they had.
Well, you know, when they had some of the trees come down, I mean, they certainly could pursue a finance committee reserve request.
But, I, I.
For any, anything that's, but most of the time, what happens is, groups of people come, like scouts and all these other people, they just descend on these areas, and they chop the wood, and they take it away, because they sell us. So Yankee ingenuity's still there.
Well, I, I thought they were gonna drop those trees that were destroying the asphalt this winter.
Their root system.
Right.
I think they did. I think they did drop them.
Alright. But then they still need this forty-nine oh three for more trees?
Well, don't forget, this isn't just for trees, if, if you looked at the other, well.
This is your children's rail trail, Russ.
If we can save one child, Mr. Speaker, one child. Alright, that, that's done, okay. I don't know what it is, but.
Russ is going out with chainsaw tomorrow. He needs firewood.
He did, yeah, I used up all yours, could you buy some more?
Can I buy some more for you?
And leave it in the cellar for six years, because that stuff burned great.
I bet it burned great, didn't it?
That was the best burning wood I've had.
Yeah, I, I, I don't screw around, I don't think about the bets for my wife.
I even brought my wife to load it, just so that she could look at Russ.
Right.
She threw four pieces in the truck.
And then you both left.
We did that just a bust.
You did. Alright. Well, Zingan.
So what is?
Welcome, how are you today?
So is that a yes or a no?
Well, Laura's taking tomorrow off, Carl, telling you right now.
I would say no to the tree removal, because if we're putting in eight thousand, we get the grant, they're gonna have to remove the trees to do the paving anyways, right?
Right, that's, yeah, okay.
Yes, no?
I think you gotta do it, because it's gonna continue to screw up the rail trail.
So, I have a yes and a no, Joe?
Go.
The sighing is getting louder.
Well, I don't, I don't, I just don't know how to vote, because I don't want to be after someone run against me now, because I voted wrong, and, so, I mean, I like the way I voted, and. It's good to have a difference of opinion, but maybe it's not, because, I mean, I'm not a teacher or anything, but sometimes it's good if difference of opinions are okay.
Well, think of it this way, it's one less tree they can hang you from.
Oh, yes, yes.
I guess that's a yes.
I vote yes. Yes.
Now what's your decision?
Remo cut all the trees down.
They're all going, yep. Add a one in front of that, make it fourteen thousand. Bond for.
They're gonna have to drag our asses deeper in to hang us now. We'll get the low hanging fruit.
It's gonna be an oak tree.
Yeah. How do you wanna tell, um, from that tree over there you just planted?
Right. Town Beach erosion, we can just saw the bodies there, we're fine.
They asked for a class.
Yeah.
Okay, take care of that.
So what happened with the tree?
The old, yeah, yeah, the trees, yes.
I convinced them, thank you, Mel.
Yeah.
Old Town Beach is no.
You don't wanna fix the erosion?
No.
GPW can help.
That's.
Well, what lake is the Old Town Beach on?
Middle.
Middle?
You've never been?
I've never been there.
It's where the sewer pump station is.
Just one person uses it.
When Carl came, it was the new town.
In the, the dip on Berkshire Ave.
Where the pump station is.
It was still the Old Town Beach one.
On Berkshire, not the place we went.
No, on Berkshire.
Is that where we went and did the award, that, you awarded that poor guy that passed away, and right next to it was a pump station?
Yeah, the pump station that splits that road in half, that's.
That's it, okay, yeah, yeah, I know that.
No, 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 the Old Town Beach is closer to.
Tell us, Mr. Historian.
It's closer to Point Grove Road. Alright, not as far down, we're talking in a different pump, pumping station.
A different pump.
Oh, okay.
When you turn, from Point Grove, you take a right.
You see it, yeah, you see it, it's on the left.
You go down, it's on the left. That's the Old Town Beach. One person uses it a year.
It used to be, I mean, I got swimming lessons when I was a kid there.
It's shallow.
That's where it was.
They threw us in at Smith Beach, and, because they didn't care about the glass.
They have the boats there now, but the boats.
Look, Smith Beach, let's not self-assess the closing, we can figure that out later.
Okay. Channel fifteen, this is, you know, of course, these are just, um.
No.
These are just issues that relate to, um.
Televised the hangings, no, alright.
I mean, to have no capital, I don't think would be.
No.
This, this comes from the revolving side too.
Yeah, but you have to vote it out, so you just can't go, and you have to, this is a budget, like EMS, you have to actually vote it out through town here.
I understand that, but that's where this expenditure is coming from.
Right.
I know we're not supposed to talk about that, because we don't talk about where the income comes on the council agencies and everything else, but this is enterprise fund, less like an enterprise fund.
Right.
But I think it's premature, because the infrastructure to support the cameras and equipment for meetings is not in place in town hall yet. I would have, that being said, maybe he should start to look at that, under that capital line item.
Well, the thing is, is Joe and I just worked out a deal with Peter Cowles from channel, the Peg Channel in Westfield, to come over and give us consulting services to.
To do something.
We just put him under contract to help us do these things.
I understand that, so I, was my suggestion is, so, my, the, for example, and I don't.
The infrastructure's not there, I got it.
Infrastructure's not here, some of that work has to be done in town hall, and also some of the wireless infrastructure needs to be in place in town hall to support some of this. It's the same infrastructure that they already built out at the police, or they're, they just budgeted for in the police, uh, it's already built out at fire, and it would be incremental to do it in town hall now, so it should all work together. And then this room gets the, and the land use rooms or whatever, this should get to be where it's automated too, you, you said it during the day, you tell the camera to come on at a certain time, and it shows that meeting.
Well, let me ask you, is there any interest in light, in lieu of the fact that the fire department's already done with wifi? We're okaying under general fund wifi for police, is there any appetite for doing wifi development of this building under this fund source?
Under, if it can be done under this fu, fund source to, as part of, yes.
Which would then allow us to be ready to do the other recording.
Yes.
So you could actually retitle it.
I don't know if it's eligible, you'd have to come back to me and tell me.
Okay. Ta-da.
But that's, that was part of, part of the, when, part of the cable committee's increase in the franchise fee was to fund that endeavor. And I thought that would be the first step to that endeavor, I just never did figure out if it's eligible yet, under that enterprise fund to do it. If not, you're gonna have to pull a ton of wire and everything anyway, to do it.
Well, that's what I mean, that's, that's sort of like the backbone anyway, so we might as well see if that can be done out of this fund source. So that we could partner with those kind, types of companies that do this work, because this would allow us to move this up, instead of doing it in outlying years from general fund, we could do this sooner.
And, and again, this, and as far as the rest of the, the wifi for town hall, on a budget note, that was not a topic for discussion, because of the other pressing issues that are already funded under this budget. I think Vice Chairman said it well, you, you couldn't fix everything in one year, right, there was stuff that had to get done this year with.
No, well, Russ had, and Russ had asked me about the wifi capability in this building, and I told him that police was being done out of the general fund next, so this might allow us to move. Up this issue and start getting this done, at least the backbone of it.
Correct.
Well, then why don't we put an H by this and retitle it?
Right, go find out.
But I am gonna find out.
Right.
An H and retitle. Because I, I, I think that whole cable thing, I think. Cause I, I, I think that whole cable thing, I think, maybe we should start thinking about getting more volunteers to, to expand on that. Um, you know, because it looks like maybe one person is getting overburdened. Uh, you know, trying to take care of the, the town crier and this, along with all, all those other, other jobs, you know? So maybe it's time that we reach out to the community because there's, I think, what we found with the two hundred and fiftieth, there's a lot of younger people that got involved with our media.
Right.
You know, Jim Putnam reached out.
I think, I think we just got old.
But, but there's, but there's this.
Seriously, yeah, I mean.
Group that would, I think would be great to organize.
You're absolutely a hundred percent correct.
And I, I think these are the kind of people, they wouldn't even be looking for a stipend, they would just do it out of the goodness of their heart.
And it's also, but you have to make, a hundred percent agree, you also have to put some of the equipment in place that these kids wanna work with. So, and I'll tell you what, not, not the longer you wait, but the, the pricing on some of the stuff that you can get now, not unlike drones, is just crashing by thirty to forty percent a year. You know, what you can get, a whole HD broadcast over the internet system now, you know, is a fraction of a fraction of what it was five years ago. And it's a box and, you know, you don't have to go to two months of training to learn how to use it and make, well, there's no making us look good, but you know, make someone look good on camera. But, you know what I mean, it, and, and kids today know how to use it.
That's a special feature, it's called filters.
Yeah, right, that would be the blurring, right, yeah, just blurring.
That'd be funny.
Be like a federal mob trial, right, yeah. But anyway, so yeah, and you're right, to get other people involved in that. If you have the stuff in place, absolutely.
Well, I'll, I'll talk to my vendor and I'll also, you know.
You may have to.
I'll talk to Tommy, I'll talk to Scanlon to make sure that, that's, this is, that's an eligible fund source to undertake that.
There you go.
Perfect.
Okay, grinder pump maintenance and replacement, standard.
Yup.
That's standard, these are all standard there.
Upgrades?
Sewer, sewer revenues.
Standard. Sewer flow meter, gotta know our flow.
Laura's double checking the, uh, you know, now that you've made the rate increase, she's double checking that and then we also have, um, revenue offsets from the sewer capital count.
Right.
Alright, now.
So those are all standard.
No, yeah, I mean, I think Randy made a good. The rest of the year, good? Yeah, I mean, that's.
So what does it look like there, Captain Laura?
That's what I was gonna.
How's the ship there?
You gotta give me a few minutes to go to the.
Alright, we're gonna go to intermission?
Yeah, go to intermission.
We'll go to intermission.
Five minute recess, it's seven fifty-five. Okay, budget meeting resuming at eight oh five, in the process of reviewing the line item budget and the accounting staff is computing all of the changes that have been discussed in the earlier part of the meeting for different selectmen recommendations. Russ, do you wanna sing?
No.
Russ, do you think there's an over amount of paper books there?
Yes, I did, okay.
Oh, we've switched, that's not new style.
I removed the lodge oversize one.
There's a lot of clippies here.
Doug said he, he, he noticed there was a trend in here of lodge black clips.
Oh.
Alright, so we're going, starting over this.
So this is the same thing we just went through, isn't it?
Page, well, this is the actual legend. There's nothing really new on page one.
Right.
No, unless you see a red, a red lined item.
The red line item tells us the start.
So two is okay, we're on page three.
Yup.
Minor equipment.
Which is the stuff we already talked about.
Right, you already okayed that for.
Right.
Right, that's gonna be added to the other mon- other.
Right.
Okay. To bring it to eleven hundred. Software you did.
And the four hundred is gonna be deleted.
It is okay.
Right, you've, you deleted this fifteen.
The part-time staff, we delivered that.
But they're gonna do that, we don't really need to. They're gonna do that, once you made the decision.
We go over this when it's done.
Part-time staff is on hold.
Right.
Yup.
Yeah, no, that was all on the other, these other sheets. Right, essentially, you're cross-referencing all the decisions made up there.
And we got rid of, on page four, conservation, additional hours.
There's nothing that they, that they said to change at all.
And, the cell phone. The drone.
Drone is out.
Yeah.
Actually, no one has requested it.
Page five.
Yeah, interestingly, they were all supposed to go in.
I, I was under the impression that everybody just got home, even the police, and no one, no one else requested it.
Well, it's interesting because it'd be volunteers on the conservation side, they don't need any permits, they set it up, they can go because they're, they're, they're doing their volunteering. But on the police fire side, there's a whole different animal. Yeah.
That's the licensing requirement.
And News forty or twenty-two, this one was talking about their drone and what it takes for it to go up. On the, on the litigation or the, it's unbelievable what it takes for that thing to fly.
Right. Doug, under page five, Laura's got a, a, an annotated note here, fiber connection between town hall, police and fire. Is that still a pending issue or is that, I believe that's taken care of under that, the grant?
Okay, so if you go into the.
Is it under the grant?
It was gonna get rolled back in to that, in the direct bill. How was that piece where MBI wouldn't play nice, right?
Right.
They made a mess out of our conduit.
I, I asked MBI to pay the town for the use of their, their, no, well, it's our conduits.
Right.
But I asked them to pay us rent for running their lines and our conduits and they never got back to me and they kept replacing people.
Really? So every time you ask, they get rid of somebody?
Yeah, every time, he's not here anymore, that person's not here anymore, then I call the executive director, well, she left, because I used to be very involved in these meetings at the beginning.
Maybe that works out in others.
And then remember, they had thirty-two potential vendors that were gonna do this and then by a year or two later, they were down to eight.
So page five is okay, right Doug?
Well, they gotta plug in the number, but yes.
Okay. Six is okay.
Okay.
One million under the levy limit, but I would just.
Okay, police, I think we.
Did that, right?
Well, yeah, yeah, we did, you already made, like I said, some of these red lines things, they've already edited them, so.
Right.
So they're gonna have to just, you know, once you've eliminated something, the accounting department's gonna just remove it from the draft budget.
There you go.
Yeah, that, okay. Alright, so just for, so you're aware of, for the water, they, right now, they, they have a retained earnings of five, roughly five hundred and, um, ten thousand dollars and we are using five hundred, almost, or four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of the retained earnings.
Right, but they did a rate increase.
But they did a rate increase.
Right, for next year.
Yup.
Yup.
But just so you're aware.
Yup, just like Randy.
Yes, their stuff, I mean, that's what they wanna.
Yup.
Yeah.
But I, I will tell you this, if you think about this for a minute, when we put the debt service in for their three to four million dollars worth of capital projects, the three point two million water line in the pump station.
Yup.
We had already fully funded those debt services, they're only gonna be making partial payments this year as a rollover. So you're gonna have a lot of that money, it's going to, it's gonna turn back to their, their, um, retainer, does that make sense?
Yup, yup.
Okay, so let's, let's think about it in those terms.
Yup.
Alright, that's.
So, drum roll please.
Drum roll.
All those, the rate. So the rate is eighteen dollars and sixty-five cents, and it's, we're one million under the levy limit.
And we were seventeen dollars and forty-seven, right?
Forty-seven, forty-eight.
We were seventeen forty-seven.
I win.
Using that, right?
Yeah, I get hung first.
I get hung first. Don't you worry, you will.
But that's predicated on us using nine fifty in the free cash, right?
Correct, correct, correct.
And four hundred for stabilization.
And we, we would, we would like to say we, that, we would like to double check it tomorrow.
Oh, absolutely.
Sure, yeah.
We go through that.
And that doesn't include North Pond. That does include North Pond.
It does. No, they've built that in, that's built in.
So how much of that?
Cause you thought this was gonna be. Well, don't forget, the, the.
I think it was a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars between principal and interest on North Pond.
It's, it's in here Doug, Doug, it's actually in your, your thing here in the back.
She's asking Laura, then having me look.
And in every.
No, but that's a fifteen year note, so you have the latitude to go to a twenty.
And it's every hundred thousand dollars.
It's still a die.
This, if I learn anything from you, I learned that.
Okay, yeah, eighty, yeah, Laura's right, it's a hun- it's about a hundred and thirty-six thousand. So that hundred and thirty-six Doug is predicated on fifteen years. So if we go, you want me to look up at the notes and see what a twenty year?
No, I don't.
Nope, because.
Okay, just offering.
So do you look back at anything that we left out?
So if.
I don't care.
If we go at what we're talking about, it's a dollar eighteen.
Well, we don't know that yet.
Well, I'm just saying that.
They, they have to.
And you're using.
But you're using, but Karen, you're using this year's values, right?
The land values, yes.
So we, we have not, right, so we haven't even plugged.
New growth.
Exactly. You haven't even plugged in any of that stuff.
But right now, as we're looking at, the worst case scenario is a dollar eighteen increase.
Right.
Roughly.
Worst case scenario.
Yes.
And you can just blame it on, on North Pond.
No, it's all, it's, it's all of, of everything, we understand.
How do you spell delicacy?
T O L.
Well, then they could use the newer tree.
They could, yeah. But do you go back and look at anything that we put a star mark, a star?
Sure, we got it.
Do we do that?
Yeah.
Do we do that with finance later?
No, I think we do it now as a quick pass and then say, okay, we really do need to do this. You know, I mean, and the big one really is.
Are we gonna finish going through this or we don't need to go?
We don't have to, we covered all in here, I thought. Unless we wanna go back and look at raw numbers from the budget hearings and say, well, that, that was ludicrous, we shouldn't have plugged that number in.
No, no, but, you know, the, the other thing.
He's gonna stop me from doing that right now.
The other thing you haven't looked at is some of, you know, we, we have to make adjustments in the, the healthcare line item. And then you also have some retirements coming up, so we have to accommodate for.
We can't control that either.
No, but we have to, we have to build in a combination.
I understand that, but my point is, so before next week, or do we wanna do it now, is go through these budgets and see if there's any big increases that were put in that we wanna back off or before we reconsider some of the stars or just go back and look at some of the asterisks like, you know, that the, the, um, stormwater piece, do we wanna go back and look at the police piece? Do we wanna look at, I don't, you know, I don't care. Do you wanna program, because we didn't program any money in, even for the finance and the design of the repairs to the firehouse.
Or the new cemetery.
Or, well.
We didn't, we didn't put any number in for that cemetery.
No, we may, we may need to study that tie and bond stuff for the next year because there's just so much in that document.
And this?
But that came out as emergent, correct?
Yeah, but that's why we could do a design, if you wanna do, like I said, a design authorization on that.
My point, because if you don't do it now, you're gonna wait for a special to get the money to do a design or a FinCom reserve to do it.
So even if we put twenty grand in there to, to, to have something.
My point, it's.
Right, you're gonna want twenty thousand to start something if we need to start something.
Correct.
Yes, Laura?
And when you guys put things on hold, it zeroed it out, I just put hold, you know, so those things are not in, are not in there.
Right, are not in there, right, right.
Just, I just wanna, and then I did have one question about EMS. We have been always showing it as a separate in the booklet.
It's an enterprise.
It's a special revenue.
The money comes from a special revenue, but the actual EMS in this is actually in the general fund budget. So can we put it into the general fund in, under the town hall instead of showing it separately, even though the money?
Town hall, you can't.
Or.
Under town government?
Not under the town government.
I like it how it is.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I like it how you carry it the way it is and then, and then it's just a known subsidy.
Yup. Yup.
Yeah.
That way it's got its identity.
We pay into it, plus you're gonna see, because that's where we've been carrying a lot of the ALS weight as a strategy, we know that that's where.
Well, what happened, but when we do the vote each year, we take money out of the accounts, the, what is it, the receipts, reserve for appropriation for EMS. So we take the three hundred five or the three fifteen or whatever out and then that's what, that's what's going toward that total budget and then the rest is from the general fund taxation.
General fund taxation, but in all our budgeting and, you know, it's part of the general government.
In the model it is, in the model it is, but in the finance sheet, it's separate.
It's separate.
Right.
So, if you wanna continue, it was just one of those, I throw it out there.
I think, did we, did we ask this question last year too?
No.
I asked you. Away, look, what's your thought?
You know what she's saying, what Laura's saying is should, should you be putting just EMS next to fire department under the general fund budget as opposed to having a standalone sheet like one on sewer? Cause it's, it's one of the dozen of the other, one of them you're putting under and it's got a revenue offset under the general fund one, the other one you take it out, it's got a tax rate offset for that, when you do your votes to adopt the budget.
But that's like, oh, but isn't, when you say the same thing for, I mean, we do that with DPW, right? Cause they have chapter ninety monies and other grant monies and what, every department has some other fund source besides.
Right, but we don't vote those as part of the motion for the budget on the floor.
You vote the budget as the budget.
Right, but chapter ninety items don't go through the budget, you do those directly outside the budget.
Isn't the budget model here even built with chapter ninety receipts at the top to get your budget?
Nope, that's one thing that's not in it.
I picked a bad example.
What do other communities do, Laura, have you seen?
I haven't seen it, it's just, you know, any, you know, schedule A or whatever, we're always adding it to general government.
Pitch risers, that's when they do the scheduling.
Yeah, cause you gotta, you gotta go, oh, right, you gotta add that in, so it's just one of those, if you like it, we can still keep it, I just was throwing it out there.
I thought it was broken out a few, it was less than ten years ago that EMS came out of the fire budget as a separate piece and there was a reason for it, I don't remember what it was.
Because we were generating, we started billing, that's why.
So, and, and so now you wanna put it back in, but we're still billing?
That's why.
And he says right, who's on first?
No, that's, that's why it's out, that's why we built.
Why don't we leave it the way it is?
Okay.
Okay?
Yup.
There, we took care of that.
Thank you.
Uh, I added up all the Hs, it's about ninety-three thousand dollars.
Ten cents.
So if you wanna add them back in, it's ten cents.
So which were those, can we be particular or?
Well, I, I, I put in the full amount, the fifty-six thousand, seven hundred for the new cemetery, the fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirteen for the part-time, uh, uh, union for quarterly billing and the, um, seventy-five hundred for the I plan table for E permit program.
That's a no.
And then thirteen thousand, five hundred for wifi.
Karen, how much is, how much, Laura, how much is?
Oh, like the police?
No, here.
Oh, here.
How much is more, how much more money's available?
What about the police?
In potential free cash as an application against the budget?
Oh, I.
The fifty-six thousand, the fifty-six thousand dollars.
No, I, I, I didn't put an H by.
Right, after the roll over.
Well, no, I thought we agreed that we were just gonna give them twenty.
Yeah, we did, but we put a star next to the first thing.
Okay, so, in terms of the application of the free cash, we were gonna put nine fifty against the budget.
Right.
They've already identified the two hundred thousand for the snow nice deficit, the O P E B, uh, salary transfers are taken care of and then we're gonna do town hall and a few other things, so there's probably about two hundred to two fifty that could also go against.
The tax.
The tax.
Or just save.
And you'd still be rolling over how much?
That'd be twenty cents.
Or save it for payments.
Okay, so, so they could do another two fifty and you'd still roll six hundred more to the following year.
Fine.
So you could do that.
Yeah.
So that would not only go and take care of those holds and would also start lowering that other tax rate. Right, Karen, it would, it would lower it.
Yup.
So.
But he just put all the Hs back in.
Yeah, but I didn't think we were gonna do the quarterly billing this time, no, I didn't wanna do that.
He just rolled them up as, just threw it up there as a hundred grand.
Just threw it up there, informational, but he, but Joe is correct, we had a star next to the, uh, full-time, uh, communication supervisor.
And you also had.
Was that a hold or was that in there?
He had, we had, we said no, but I put a star next to it.
And then there was the other.
But does Laura have it in her model as funded?
No, 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 no.
And then you took a.
Right, but you took that out.
Right, but then we said, well, let's go back and look at the stars because we're.
You took five thousand.
Million dollars under.
You took 5,000 dollars out of the police department 01210 from 32, 391, you took it to 27,500.
But she accounted for that, that was.
I am a firm believer that we, we made some cuts.
The 27 stays, right, so don't adjust that.
And I would, I would just, I wouldn't.
Do the, do the supervisor thing, don't do the quarterly billing, 27 stays and then what's left for stars? The desk that we talked about.
No, the desk was in there.
No, no, yeah, but did she get it in there?
Yeah, she gets it as a 27,500.
Right.
The desk, it's, it's a, it's a target allowance and he picks.
He can move money, he can sharpen his pencil however he likes to in that.
And then you could put in the, uh, for the building inspector, right?
Right.
The 7,500.
So Laura, do you understand we were talking about all the stars, are you there with us or are we just talking out of our ass?
So the increased hours for the part-time secretary is now a yes at 750 or just a yes at the 250?
No.
No, which, which part-time secretary, in the building department?
For the board of health.
No.
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 That's, that's.
That's zero, that's not gonna get us.
No, we, we, no, we were at two.
You were at 250.
We're at 250.
250, I was at two and.
So that's gonna stay at 250?
Yes.
Right, cause that was Joe's conversation.
It's still a no for the director.
Which director?
Yes, correct, no, I'm the director.
Yes.
Yes.
In other words, there was a request by.
Correct, yeah, no, we got it, we got it.
We're now to stormwater coordinator at 25.
You, yeah, you double starred the stormwater coordinator.
Where we're gonna fund that whole thing out of the 100 grand.
That's gonna, you're gonna remain, keep it that way.
Making sure.
Okay.
All, anything with that is the total of all the no bids.
So what we really added back in was the police piece.
No, we didn't add the police piece back, he left at 27,500, it was 32.
No, the first part of the police.
He's talking about the dispatch communicator?
We put that back in, 56,000 dollars?
For the stars, we're talking about the stars, remember?
The 56,000.
Okay, so we're gonna put the 56,000 dollars back in?
No, I, I, I was, I, I still wouldn't do it, you know?
So some stars gotta add it back in.
Well, you, we gotta let them know which stars we added back in.
That's what I'm getting at, that's all I'm trying to get at.
Okay, we'll start at the first one.
250 out of this cash, we threw it out there, we added stars.
Take the 56 out.
This is why we color by numbers and don't use the hands.
All right.
And before we start, did we put any money to the 250 in the budget?
Yes, yes.
It's already in.
Yes, they're recurring, there is a recurring under the select.
The first star item is the full-time communications center supervisor for 56,160, I will say no.
Not this year, it's, I thought what we said.
That's fine.
All right.
So that's enough.
Okay.
The next one is the stormwater coordinator.
And we, we said we'd go with 100,000, right?
So that's still enough. You, you did that.
Nope, we understand.
Okay, so now returning.
Increase hours for the part-time secretary became 250 dollars.
Right, we knew about.
Okay.
That's all the stars on the first page. Then the next one.
We had new cemetery.
Stormwater.
We were trying to find a, an amount.
Okay.
And we have not, we, I suggested a three-year plan, so if we did a three-year plan and they were, let's say they were looking for 60,000 dollars, that means we'd give them 20,000 dollars a year for three years.
Okay.
20,000 agreeable to everybody?
That's fine.
All right, so we can plug in 20,000 dollars.
Are you with us?
I will be once I get down to it.
01411.
All right, then the next thing I have is the building department.
Desk.
For the E.
I plan.
I plan. And I would say yes to that.
We said yes to that.
7,500. And the next thing I have is where we were talking about putting in 13, under channel 15, 13,500, but we were going to rename that to facilitate Wi-Fi connection.
Wi-Fi and infrastructure.
Now Laura, that, you have a revenue offset for that anyway, that doesn't affect the tax rate, right?
That's correct.
The, the channel 15.
Yeah, right, whatever way.
That's just a pass through.
That's just a pass through.
Okay, so that doesn't affect the tax rate.
Yes?
That's what I was trying to say earlier, that does not go to the tax rate, cause that, those are direct receipts in a, in a revolving. So if you, I don't, the balance is way more than that, if you wanted to use 15 to do the infrastructure, you could, without affecting the tax rate.
Or change that 15 for infrastructure slash cameras.
Unlike the EMS account that's got a separate line, that's in the general fund.
Because it's subsidized by a tax rate.
So, so put down 15,000.
Right, for infrastructure slash cameras, so they don't run out and buy cameras.
No, no, don't mention the word camera.
15 for, which line?
Infrastructure for broadcast is what we'll just call it, or infrastructure, just let's call it infrastructure.
Wi-Fi.
Wi-Fi, whatever, right.
Whatever you wanna call it, but maybe you need more than that to get, I don't know.
Right, so it may be a phased issue, right?
Right.
And we have to make sure the whole project's eligible under that program.
Anyways.
Cause that, you can't just use that money willy-nilly.
I don't think it's going to be a problem because we were able to use those funds for the town crier.
Right.
Now how bad did we do?
Well, it doesn't matter, cause we took another 250,000 out of our, uh, free cash.
Free cash, if you want, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so what they did.
Okay.
Well, I asked you if you wanted.
Well, I.
Cause we could, no problem, and I said, why don't we save that for paving later?
Well, we could, but we also have year-end money we might be able to do to it.